Do you know the scale of this map?
There we go.
Uh, oh, do you mean like the, 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 uh?
Pixel.
Oh, for, for the grid size? Um, I don't think either. Oh shit, they actually do have grids. Um. Actually, wait, I might, I might. Um, where were you guys going to go? I have to remember my own encounter for this shit. God, I don't remember. Uh, I don't for the first one, the big one, but I can check one, two, three, five, six. Twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seven. Twenty-one. Twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty? Thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven. Just use the second one. It doesn't have a grid.
Easy.
Um. One thing that you can do is just if you really want to use the first one, because the first one was a higher image quality, just turn the grid off and just tell your players, hey, each of these, each of these squares is X by X feet, and then we can do the work.
Every one of these squares is a circle.
Yeah, yeah. Every one of these squares is five or 10 feet. Just turn the grid off, uh, set the pixel length to question marks, which you can do. Uh, and we'll, we'll do the work from there.
On a side note, I want everyone to look at my stream. I made it so people can tell who's talking now.
You should. Wait, how the fuck did you do that?
Look at my scream, my scream and find out.
Oh, God, I've got to navigate to twitch.com.
Fine, I'm going to Twitch.
This is such a pain. Hey, you're not playing me, fine.
Hey, how did you do that?
Uh, so.
Magic.
Uh, so there is a program. It's called Discord Reactive. And it, it's actually just, it's not even a program. It's just a link.
Should I, should I change my, my Discord icon from, uh, uh, legally distinct, uh, hollow live member, Seraphina?
I don't know. I think it's entirely up to you.
Will I get in trouble for that?
If I, okay, here's the second question. If, if I change mine right now, will it update in real time?
I actually don't know if it will, so you could try it.
Sure, I'll.
Just calling from the call.
Probably. Let's, uh, but I know the call won't update in real time then, so probably not. Who, who is that handsome man?
Potentially not.
Who is my handsome man?
Uh, Rebecca's background flashed onto the screen for.
Oh, mine.
Oh, there's a handsome man.
It looked like a handsome man.
I, I left the stream because that goes.
I just have Rebecca's stream permanently muted.
Yeah, my, my stream's muted.
Being muted would also make sense.
Oh, my God, Rebecca, your background, your desktop is so clean. Yeah.
It is clean. Uh, yeah, that's, that, that's the main character from the anime.
Well, yeah, solo leveling. Let's fucking go, Becca.
You know me, I like, I, listen, when I, 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 I liked him at the, in the beginning, but then once he became my favorite class in existence, he just became my man after that.
Uh huh.
You guys don't want to see my background.
Believe it.
Background is set to automatically rotate. Every minute.
No, not because of like the image. It's not like borders of shit, but like my, 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 my home screen is like, it is cluttered with icons. Uh, one of my old college buddies said, I have producer screen, which means that there is not a semblance of organization in the world that can save it, and it's very fucking true.
I hide all icons because I hate seeing them.
Yep, yep, yep. No, I hate them too. I.
I, I think, I think mine's not bad.
Uh, if, if I wasn't, if we weren't streaming on Twitch and my background would be recorded for all eternity, I would show you guys, but I, I cannot.
I'm saving it the second we do.
I.
This man is gooning, sir.
You don't gotta, you don't gotta announce that to God and everybody.
What's that? What's that meme? Uh, we're, it's, it's, it's gooning time, sir.
Out of my salad?
Aye, boss. Oi, boss. Who you want us to rough up, boss?
Good question.
Me and, yeah, I remember, like, the world, the world was a better place back when gooning meant you had like a squad of henchmen.
Yeah.
Agreed.
I, I, I saw a shirt online. It was just a picture of like a shitty ass WoJack image of like a bearded dude with a, with an Irish cap on. It just says number one goon on it.
Hey, Sam, welcome to the stream.
Yes?
I only be a gooner.
Nope, there's a different Sam.
Wait, what?
Sam.
Oh, new Sam.
There's Sam.
Oh, God.
There's Sam.
There's another Sam. He, he, he's my favorite man because he's, he's in all of my streams. He's my guy.
Favorite man named Sam. Oh, my.
I also trust him because last night I streamed for two and a half hours and I was muted the whole time.
Way.
I was.
Oh, my God, Becca.
So, Sam's, Sam has to be involved in all of my streams from now on.
That's, I, I can respect the hell out of it. I really can.
Yeah.
A plurality of Sams.
Hope I have a collection of Sam so that way one day I can just do a D and D game with everyone named Sam and everyone gets confused.
That, I was about to say, that would be a god awful viewing experience for everyone involved.
Call it Sam's Club.
Yeah, Sam's Club.
God damn it. That's really good. That's rather the joke I was gonna say.
This is such a good joke.
It's rather the joke I was gonna say. It's good enough.
I was gonna steal a joke from Sam and Max, so.
You know, this whole time I've just been trying to adjust this map so it fits the grid as closely as possible.
You want to know a really, you can set it as an image. Just literally right click and put it like, set advanced options set as image. You can just grab the corner or grab each side and scale it till it mostly fits, but.
Oh, yeah, that's kind of what I'm doing.
Oh, perfect. Straight up though, don't, I, I wouldn't bother. Like, just don't, don't worry about it. Set the map to, to be the, the, the image's perfect pixel size, uh, and then just turn the grid off and we'll figure it out.
Yeah, we'll just move our minions.
It's much easier.
I can count squares.
Yeah, I could count squares. One square equals five.
Oh, you have a measurement tool. It'll be fine.
The measurement tool is wrong when you do that though, so don't actually follow that advice.
Nah.
It is. It's never right.
And we could just say that like 10 feet is 30 feet. It's fine.
I, I mean, you could, but God, why would you?
Alright, everyone, divide your movement speed by three.
It keeps it at least.
Sorry to everyone who has a non-default movement speed.
This is close enough.
That is close enough.
I'm pretty happy with it. Uh, the, the main thing is like, I don't know how to do lighting.
Don't wait, what?
I wouldn't worry about the lighting. It's fine.
Don't worry. Oh, oh, do you mean to like make the whole map invisible? Uh, go to like, there should be a button on the left hand side that says Fog of War. Uh, hit that and click somewhere on the map and then it'll have a prompt pop up. Tell it yes.
Hide, reveal mask?
Uh, yeah, that. Uh, then it'll say, uh, turn on Fog of War, yes or no, hit yes. Then it should all darken. And then you can, there's a reveal button. Then you just drag the area you want to reveal at a time.
Okay. Turn on Fog of War.
Yep, yep. Then it should all turn dark and you can, the, the area that you lighten with the squares, uh, is revealed. Then you can hit darken and then you can de-reveal them.
Okay, this'll work.
There you go. I can't find my goon meme.
That is a great rollout. What the heck? Six. That's a great rollout.
That is a great rollout.
Yeah.
Is that milk tank? No, that's just a cow.
No, that's, that's just a cow.
Uh, it would be better for this milk tank.
I didn't make the emote, so.
That's fair.
Probably get in trouble for it anyway if it was milk tank.
Yeah.
No, you can just, you can do shit.
I thought they were like super picky on that.
They sometimes are. Uh, you can get away with some, you, you can see I, I posted just Mario earlier.
That's fair. That's fair.
Here's one that's Slugma.
No, Slugma's so cute.
I like Slugma. Have you guys played Too Many Types? I was literally about to say Too Many Types. He's a decent type.
Uh, I haven't played Too Many Types, but I am aware of it.
It's shockingly fun.
It is, yeah. And I, I've seen, I watched a stream of it, um, on the channel that I got the Slugma emote from.
That, that checks.
What was the, um, what was the most recent Pokemon game to come out?
Um, X and Y?
Sword and, or not, no. X and Y, yeah. Definitely. No, that's it. He's right. It wasn't Scarlet Violet. Forget about those games.
That was like Shield or something. I don't remember.
No, Sword and Shield.
Or Scarlet Violet.
Yeah, Sword and Shield was the last one, like before last one, I mean.
Yeah, I think it was Scarlet and Violet. I saw like a weird fake leak. Um, that said there was gonna be like a, like a fighting camel, uh, type Pokemon or something.
What?
Camel, camel type?
Yeah, it was like something like Swool Llama.
That would kick ass. There was a fighting flamingo.
Yeah, the, yeah, the, um.
It's called Flamigo.
Yeah, Flamigo. Yeah, it's, it's actually seen some competitive play. It's actually good.
Wait, I'm looking, I'm looking at the name. What did I say it was?
You said, uh, I already forgot.
Swool, swool camel?
Swool llama? Was that what, was that what you said?
Swool llama balls!
Ah! That was good.
If you're, if you're doing.
You actually had me for a second.
You, you, the, the best one in my opinion is Sock Deez Nuts. That was up there. Or Ride On.
Ride on this dick.
Yeah.
My favorite is, not a Pokemon. Not, not a Pokemon, but I like asking people if they know the Greek, wherever the, the Ulikkies.
Eve, would you like to start the game is what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
Start the game.
Okay.
I'm, I'm not sorry.
I know you're not.
Last time. You dis, you exited from the Polar Express and descended into the sewers to avoid detection. And in the sewers, you ran into the mysterious sewer elf, Shickle.
Shuckle?
Nickle?
Shuckle.
Sorry, I shouldn't have taken a bite of soup.
You're good.
Are you biting your soup?
Cause there's.
Oh, it's noodles. Right.
It's thick.
Yep, yes.
You bite soup. That's just how soup works sometimes.
Hag soup does, that's for sure.
Speaking of hags.
And you find yourselves in Shickle Mrs. Claus's, uh, hut in the sewers. After she's, she summoned the door to it. And she says that she needs, like, you might need her help.
Yes, if memory serves, we told her we were going to go and kill brutally maim and or capture Jack Frost.
In that order.
Mmm, not on an empty stomach, you're not.
I don't think I have a stomach.
Still.
You are a stomach.
She leans in, takes a really close look at you and says, there it is.
Eh? What?
She just like points somewhere on your body that looks exactly the same as everywhere else.
I stick my hand into my own body and feel around in there.
And she starts like grabbing ingredients from the shelf and already like throwing them into her already mostly full cauldron.
Oh, by the way, I am using push to talk. When I hit the button, does the little beeping noise come on for you guys too, or is it just for me?
It's just for you.
Just for you.
Okay, thank God, because I wouldn't want to annoy you all slash beep up the stream.
No, it's just you.
Yay.
And the, uh, the spacey one, come over here.
Hmm, okay. She'll get closer.
You're not supposed to be this way, are you?
Hmm. Not entirely sure yet. Um. I'm still young, I think.
Do you want to do the, uh, character transformation now, or have you got something planned for later?
Uh, literally at any point. I just, she just needs to eat something. That's my excuse. It's what she's gonna use.
Okay. While she's like, alright. She starts rifling through some jars. There's one full of crab legs, still moving.
Oh.
There's another one with a weird shifting powder. And one that looks like salt. She grabs the one that looks like salt, gets a big fistful of it and tosses it directly in your face.
Uh, she gets salt, like, all over her?
Not actually, not actually salt. It's mysterious powder that looks like salt.
That's fair. I, I'll just call it.
I think they arrest you if you have that usually.
Toom the mysterious white powder, Becca.
Yes. Well, she, she.
Okay, be upon ye.
Yep, she, she, uh, she sees, she gets all this powdery stuff on her and for some odd reason, it mixes into the cosmos and collects into the stars and then she just brightens up and then she has like this Sailor Moon transformation. As, uh, then the next thing you know, uh, the cosmos just opens up and, uh, disappears as a new astral comes out.
Oh. Oh, this is much worse.
Well, that's just rude.
Yep. A very starry looking m- moon elf comes out. That's so much better.
I think you look lovely now, new astral.
Yes, my queen, you look lovely as always.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Mrs. Claus looks over at you, um, handsome elf man.
Yes?
The hell are you?
Oh, names Fitzhockwood. I am, uh, the retainer of my queen here.
Yes.
Well, has.
My, my undead companion changed along with me.
The undead companion, unsp- unbeknownst to the party, uh, as she was changing, uh, metamorphosized himself back into the living.
Wait, so hot, wait, hold on, hold on. So undead was a Hockwood?
I think we all knew that, yes.
Yes, I'm, I'm a Hockwood. What are you talking about?
My mind has been blown to smithereens.
For anyone on the stream, mostly it's other Sam. He always plays a Hockwood. That's just a constant thing, just for context.
Damn, you really blew my hair back with this one.
Yep. No one saw this coming.
I really, I really thought he was just a, uh, just a un, unconnected skeleton.
Well, Miss Zoe, sometimes surprises are just meant to be so.
Man, I'm gonna need a minute to recover.
Who are you talking to?
The gods. They speaketh.
I only ever talk to a tree.
But you learn to plug your ears, son. You Hockwoods are always getting into some weird business.
I don't think I have ears either.
I feel like you have the option to have ears, so I think everything is an ear at that point.
Either way, open your ears and listen up.
Oh.
You're not going out there without a good meal and you're not finding the place without a guide.
I have uploaded a meme for you, Maribel. It is in the memes chat.
Ooh, moon elf powder. Classy. A gooner, less classy. Okay.
You're a moon elf. That's funny.
We call that the old moon goon.
Moon goon.
New username.
That is a great name.
So, she's grabbing spider legs, eyeballs, um, strange bones. A human skull for sure is like bobbing around in that stew.
I've never had a skull before. That might be interesting.
Oh, you just want the marrow and the little bits of brain from the inside of the lid of the cranial lining. That's where the flavor is.
How awful.
A haunted root vegetable? A depressed mandrake?
I'm a depressed man.
Stick your finger in there.
I do. It burns.
Mmm, too much werewolf in ya.
Care wolf.
Nice flavor.
Care wolf, thank you.
Oh, worse.
Is it?
I have no idea what a care wolf is, but that does sound interesting.
No clue, Ellie.
Oh, my gosh. It totally slipped my mind. I have no music playing.
It's okay.
That's okay. I'm perfectly emulating the entire soundtrack of Chrono Cross in my mind at all times, so I didn't even notice.
Oh, my God. How specific.
It's a really good soundtrack.
Do you have something in mind, Eve, or shall Sam just make a thing happen?
Uh, I was just gonna put on, um, the playlist for studying and chemistry in the tower.
Nice.
I'd say that works.
Try that for now. Uh.
Ooh. Chipbot.
And now Chipbot's been added.
Hi, Chip. Oh, it's Chip on the stream?
Yeah, Chip's on the stream. He, it's actually constantly gray because he's muted.
Oh.
Because it, it has the constant, uh, you know, deafen symbol, so.
Oh.
Magic.
Yeah.
He sure is a chip off the old bot.
There's only one way to get good, strong bones for a growing body. More bones.
Are we positive I should be drinking this?
You have no bones. You need this the most.
Ah.
Now, how much do y'all know about traversing the Feywild?
Yes?
A little bit.
Very little, I'm afraid. I've only done it the once.
More trains are involved than I assumed.
They can be.
So you met the conductor?
Yes, I got a lifetime pass.
She'll do that sometimes. Any requests for the soup?
More sweet, please.
The base is hot chocolate.
Mint, please.
Thing's gonna be fucking disgusting.
Bourbon.
Like, that is the first one where she's just like, yep, you got it, and immediately pulls out her own flask from under her skirt and pours a heaping, uh, bit of bourbon in there.
Ooh, spicy.
He does not say this, but he does think, anywhere but that one, please.
Sorry, what?
Any flask but that one, please. He doesn't say that though, but he sure as shit thinks it.
Don't worry. It's well sealed.
That doesn't make it better. Uh, it does. That's fine.
So. A hot spicy bourbon-y soup with a chocolatey flavor.
Mmm.
Is doled out to each one of you. Do you drink it? Or do you actually eat it? Cause you saw her put some terrible things in there.
I'll stick a finger in there and absorb, absorb a, a mouthful.
She will plug, she will just hold her breath and chug it.
There were human parts in there, like people.
Hey, listen, sometimes you gotta do what you gotta do.
All right.
My queen, maybe don't, oh, all of it. Okay.
I'm a werewolf, so I don't know if this counts as cannibalism anymore, and I just down some, knowing that the rules of fae propriety, he, you, I don't want to say no. That would be insulting.
I regularly partake in cannibalism, technically.
So maple, astral.
I'm going to like raise it to my mouth to take a pretense sip, but not consume any of it until I see what happens to everyone else.
Bianca, in for a penny, in for a pound, uh, a spoonful, at least.
You all feel fine. There's a little bit of gurgling. It doesn't taste great.
How does it react with, um, slime?
Uh, it looks like there's almost a small tornado or a conflict going on in your slime.
How fascinating.
God damn it. So, and she's like getting her pack. Getting some things together. Just says, now that you've all eaten, are you ready to go?
Yes.
Yes?
Ready to go.
Yeah, I feel as ready as I was before I ate it, if I'm being honest.
As ready as I'll ever be.
So everyone but Bianca had the soup?
I think so.
Oh, Bianca's gonna have some as well, since she sees that nothing immediately bad is happening to the party.
Maple, maple didn't immediately dissolve, so yeah, seems good.
It tastes like someone put bones, sugar and dirt into a bowl.
I mean, basically.
I try really hard not to visibly make a face at that.
Well done, Bianca.
Mrs. Claus patented 2025 Christmas hot chocolate. Savor the crunch. It just has like bone bits.
Who?
Savor the crunch. So, be on our way then.
All right, let's go then.
Thank you for your hospitality. Yes, we must be on our way. Thank you.
You think you can get through the sewers on your own?
I assumed you were guiding us, or are you not?
Oh.
I was planning to.
Then I do believe you would be included in the let's be off part.
Please lead the way. All right.
She starts sniffing around and just seemingly kind of picks a direction at random.
I follow. I'm on stairs.
Okay. The sewer is dank, stinky and very, very glittery.
I'm not sure which part of that I hate the most.
Dank is all I need to hear, baby.
I remembered it was glittery. She's also pretty glittery, all starry.
I get it.
As you're walking, something strange happens. A magical wave passes through the sewer and a lot of the icicles suddenly melt and the temperature gets up by 30 degrees maybe, and things start to grow in waves. Deer moss becomes regular moss, which becomes small shrubs, which become flowers. And as suddenly as it came on, the wave passes and it's back to being icy. Unfortunately, this means that the path ahead of y'all, the water has all melted down and turned into ice on your path.
I'll be slip sliding now, baby. Let's go.
Uh, everyone make me a dexterity check or explain how you get across the, like, uh, across the patch of ice.
Ia Wu turning into, Ia Wu turning into my hybrid form, uh, and use my, my claws to, to more easily navigate the ice.
All right.
I become a very flat puddle of a girl and just kind of scooch my way across.
I just guidance myself and slide through.
If I'm wider than I am tall, I can't fall over.
I would argue that the ice isn't so much of an obstacle for Bianca.
You know, that's fair. All right, Fitzhockwood. Also, how does, um, how does Bianca react to seeing Fitz?
With shock.
Or?
Ooh, I'm a little bit, uh, older than you might, uh, remember me being. I'm from the. from the future to a degree. I can't tell you anything about what you might face or what you might see, uh, but, Bino, it, it, it'll all be okay.
How did you wind up a skeleton?
Uh, that was from the powers of my lady, yeah. She...
She wakes.
For the first rose of her life was interdimensional to a degree.
Yes, things are a little complicated with me and mine.
Complicated indeed, well, uh... We'll talk about this later, I guess.
Absolutely, whenever you'd like.
Okay, uh, can someone roll me a D20?
Um, by the way, how big is this gap that I have to cross?
Uh, it's less of a gap and more, um, the
Just a lot of ice.
Yeah, so because of the, uh, fluid content of the actual sewer itself, it was a little more resistant to refreezing, so the path, the river of sewage in the middle is still glittery and liquid.
Ew.
But the, uh, walkway that you have to, that you guys are walking on is covered in a patch of ice.
So this is a fun way slide, okay.
A shit slurry, one could say.
Boy, one could not.
Yeah, one could not. I do not know how to exactly traverse this, uh, favorably. I bet, I guess I'll just have to do my best, uh, I will...
I could try and carry if you like.
Wait, that's a good point, and you're a puddle.
I'm a puddle.
Uh, how, how heavy is the skeleton? I wouldn't imagine very heavy.
I'm not a skeleton anymore.
Oh, you're not?
No, he's, he's Fitz, Fitz Roy, uh, fucking usual stuff.
Fitz Hawkwood, yeah, Old Man Fitz.
Maybe a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty pounds? If you could carry me, that would be all the better, but, I mean...
I'd be happy to try. You might get a little wet, though, please do forgive me.
Either I trust you or trust my own ability. Uh, can I give an, hmm... So what kind of check is it to make it down here without dying horribly, and by dying, I mean becoming filthy? Just a dexterity check, flat?
Yeah.
Oh, I'll, I'll give it, I'll give it the old, the old try first. And...
Ah, easy. No problem.
Uh, Fitz.
A nat twenty, I do believe.
Run up the wall and do a flip off of the wall onto the other side. I feel embarrassed, it took me, I can't remember his name.
Meanwhile, Maple is just like inch-warming herself down.
Ah, good old Legolas, him and his four-hundred-pound half-brother, Lego Lamb.
What?
Medium. Bad.
I don't care, I thought it was funny.
I give it a six out of ten.
That's fair.
I've heard you make better jokes.
Mm-hmm.
Also fair.
Uh... That was strange. And Mrs. Claus just leans down to check the ice for a second.
What?
Pokes it with her finger, gives her finger a lick. Very odd indeed.
It's odd in a way that's not normal for here.
This never happens here.
Huh.
Things shift, things move, but it always stays cold.
Things getting warmer?
Hmm. And then she just continues clopping down the path leading the way.
Do you have an idea of how long it'll take for us to get there?
Yeah, why don't we get out of this shit? Hmm, so whose is this if elves do not discreet, excrete things?
There are more than elves here in the North Pole.
There's also elves.
Are there elves?
With a PH?
Oh. Right, sure.
I'm not actually sure what the difference is. But it's kind of funny to say.
I made one, I didn't make the other.
Which, uh, which one is which?
She kind of stares at you.
I stare back.
Take a guess, dearie.
Uh, Maple fishes into her belly and into her pouch and grabs a gold coin, and she flips it in the air, and it sinks back into her arm, and she says, "You made the elves."
Sure. To answer your question, missy, it could go faster.
Well, it's entirely up to you and the best way to go. I'm just curious.
Your will drives you through the Feywild. This is not a place of measured distances and set places.
Hmm, I see. Well, in that case, um, she's going to cast a spell to make sure we can at least consistently... She's gonna cast Virgo's telepathic bond.
Alright, uh, can you ping that?
I cannot ping it because it won't allow me to put it in my sheet, no matter how many times I tried.
Copy paste.
I can't even copy paste it in, because it doesn't allow me to put custom spells. So I will give you a link.
Yeah, just the spell description. Oh my god.
Yeah, it, as I said, it won't allow me to actually put it in my sheet or make a custom spell, which is why I hate this thing, so I will give you the link to it.
You forge a telepathic link among eight willing creatures within range, psychically linking each creature to all the others for the duration. Creatures with intelligence scores of two or less aren't affected by the spell.
Ah, just barely.
When the spell ends, targets can communicate telepathically through the bond, whether or not they have a common language. The communication is possible over any distance, though can't extend to other place, planes of existence.
Mm-hmm. Although actually, you know, technically Maple is by the numbers more intelligent than Virgo.
Low bar there.
Hmm, yes, I've just, I've been, I've been playing her as stupider than Virgo, but the numbers says she's two points higher.
Ooh.
I'll be spending a sorcery point to double the timeframe, so it'll last for two hours instead of one hour.
Oh, thank you, my lady. This appears to be very useful.
Never know when you're in the Feywild.
Not a bad idea. I was just gonna make sure everyone was to get, stuck together by tying them up with this cat gut.
No.
I don't think it would work on me, actually.
She experimentally, like, ties some cat gut around you.
Uh, I focus really hard on tightening my abdominal muscles that I don't have.
The sliminess of the cat gut seems to form a barrier and doesn't want to pass through or break the surface tension of your body.
Nice. And also, if you pluck it real thin, it sounds like a violin.
I miss quarantine.
It's not a bad idea. Let me help you all. And Mrs. Claus, um, generates an image of Santa's workshop in your head.
Wow, it's like I'm really there.
If you fo, if you help and focus on it, this, this track should be a bit quicker. But keep focused on it, and don't stray.
Monroe continuously focuses on it.
Alright. And, uh, everyone give me a wisdom saving throw?
The fuck?
Wisdom saving.
Check, like...
Uh, which one? There you go. Twenty-one, easy game.
Twenty-two.
Damn.
Well, la di da.
Fourteen.
Roll twenty, could you cooperate?
No.
Roll twenty says no, it's illegal.
I'm roll twenty, hello.
Okay, alright, it is a saving throw, sorry, uh...
Mm-hmm.
Add plus one to my score.
Okay.
I'd plus ten to my score, not for any reason, I just think it'd be nice.
So, as you guys are walking, you kind of lull yourselves into a haze, drifting off in the monotony of it, and Bianca and Fitz, you suddenly find that you weren't surrounded by your party anymore.
Left foot, right foot, left foot, wait, wait a second. Can you all hear me in your mind? Are, are we too far away from our party to be able to be linked?
They can still hear you.
Are you missing? She's gonna look around, see if she can spot them.
I seem to have lost you.
Is Bianca with me?
Uh, yes, you and Bianca are together.
Ah, reunited.
Gonna look around to see if I can spot either of them, since they called out mentally.
That won't do you any good.
Hmm.
That's not how travel works here. You have to think about them and go to them.
Alright, she'll say telepathically, da-da-da, she'll say telepathically. Make sure you think about us, so that way you can find us. Think very hard.
Uh...
It's just like a train.
Savvy or Emile, roll me a D20.
Savvy.
Alright. Roll twenty, please.
Bianca, I might be hearing ever so slightly the most gentle of whispers.
You do hear whispers.
I'm hearing them too.
Alright, as long as you can keep us on track, then.
You also hear clacking.
Someone's playing backgammon.
Oh boy. Black clack.
A ka-chunk, ka-chunk, ka-chunk. And then, machines and servos whirring. Around the corner, a red light scans across the wall, and then you hear ka-chunk, 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 more whirring, and the light gets closer.
Uh, I, uh, I, I will attempt to hide us? Also, does our nat twenty do anything to help us be less unfound before this is resolved?
That was to determine what encounter you guys got.
Oh, son of a bitch. Okay, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm hiding us away for a moment.
Alright.
Or maybe twenty was the best it could be, and if you rolled a one, it would have been an adult red dragon.
Now, I should, I did not write this down, but which of you guys got a fit bit from the holly jolly drone?
Bianca. Did.
Okay.
Uh, Maple did, she did.
Alright, Bianca, you're rolling stealth with disadvantage.
Yeah.
Alright, roll twenty?
Look.
Oof.
I don't have any kind of inspiration to offer you, I don't think.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, we don't have inspiration in this game, so...
I don't believe I have an inspiration.
I mean, we haven't gotten any, so...
Uninspired, unfortunate.
Maple is very inspired. She's made out of syrup and blood simultaneously.
Holly, jolly, pick up those legs, get your heart pumping. And a robotic reindeer rounds the corner and looks directly at you, both Fitz and Bianca. Uh, roll for initiative.
Oh no.
I'll be fine. Uh, Fitz will announce to you same formation as usual. Uh, uh, at least it's back in the day. I hope I can keep up. Where the hell, I don't have a character model on the board.
I don't either.
I'm throwing a character model on the board. I'm picking it.
I'm getting the map ready, sorry.
Sure, I'm, I'm just doing it to get this frickin' initiative going. Initiative sixteen ain't bad.
Should the rest of us also roll initiative in case we can make our way to them, or is that not gonna be an issue?
Maybe.
Oh, yeah, go ahead and roll initiative to, uh, like, just in case.
Okay, Maple will be in the sewer.
You guys might have a chance of spawning.
There's my initiative button.
Poor you guys, escaping.
Hold on, wait, I get, hold on, I believe I get advantage on this, because I'm a cool barbarian. Um, I think, yes, maybe, yes. Ah, there it is, nat twenty plus six. Maple's so ready. In her meditative trance-like state where she was picturing Santa's workshop, she, she's just, she's there, she's on it.
Alright, uh... Oh my gosh, I forgot I had a roll initiative for a token on the map.
Yeah, you just click the token and just roll initiative.
You, you type in the number one into the chat.
Well, you can actually just pick any sheet and just do it.
Uh, yeah.
Alright. I appreciate y'all's patience.
You're good.
It's all part of the game. Oh, tear cut.
Right?
Oh, I literally rolled the same thing.
Nice.
That's called consistency, baby.
Consistency. We should probably only use one token to measure the party.
Alright.
Yeah, and then you just gotta add, um, Bianca to the initiative tracker. Might make your life easier if Savvy roll initiative again?
Yeah, I'll roll again.
Alright, yeah.
Oh, she's already, I...
Oh, can you see her on the initiative? That's all that matters. And then you can just, uh, type in the initiative that you rolled, which I think was, what, fifteen or something?
I didn't clear the tracker from last time, I'm a, I'm a silly.
That and, uh, the tracker keeps track of the initiative of every token on each map, even if you're not currently on it.
Hmm.
Yeah, I updated to my new role, the first one.
Alright.
And, uh.
Okay, so we've got Monroe with fifteen, uh, Fitz with sixteen, Maple with twenty-six.
Hell yeah.
Oh, there's two Fitz's, I'll delete one.
Yeah.
Uh, there's Astral with seventeen and Bianca with fifteen.
Nice.
Um, do we have a, uh, Monroe?
Uh, yeah, Monroe has fifteen.
Oh, he's just not on the map, okay.
No, that was my last roll. I, I didn't know that we were in this combat, so I did not put a guy on a roll. Here, let me, just one second.
Uh, I, I, we all rolled in case we can make our way to them and help out.
Ah!
Yeah, we should probably only use one initiative tracker for it, because the party advances as one unit.
Where is my initiative at on this sheet?
Okay, so.
Uh, very top left.
Am I blind or just stupid? I see public whisper.
Yeah, down a little bit to your main little character.
Oh, I am stupid. It's bright and red with a number.
Bright and red. Twenty-five, ah, you're almost as fast as Maple, but not quite.
Alright. So, Fitz, there is a haunting robo-reindeer staring you down with a red eye scanner screaming holly jolly.
Holly jolly.
Holly jolly.
Uh.
Inadequate activity detected.
Oh, what a pain. Bianca, just remember, stay behind me. We'll deal with this together. I'll hold the front, you hold the back. He pulls out a pistol and a sword, uh, fires the pistol. Uh, it fumbles, so it locks, unfortunately, uh, no bullet comes out, and you hear a sizzle. Oh, I hate it when this happens. And then he points the sword and fires two eldritch blasts out of it.
Very cool.
Where in the balls is eldritch blast on my sheet, though? I hate that.
Probably about halfway down.
Yeah.
I mean, you can filter it to where it only has like cantrips.
Oh shit, and it rolls all of them for you. Perfect, I guess. So a twenty-seven and a twenty-three. After rule, okay, and then, wait, nineteen damage, eighteen damage. Yo, this is cracked. What's going on here?
Uh, it looks like you're getting a plus ten.
I do get a plus ten. What the hell?
Which is cool if true. I don't know where that's coming from, but nice.
Just remove five from each of those, cuz I can't remember the reason why I might be getting a plus ten to that. Instead of a nineteen, that is a fourteen, instead of an eighteen, that is a thirteen. So fourteen points of damage and thirteen points of damage in total, twenty, what, twenty-seven? Thank you.
I, I have a minor in mathematics.
Thank god we have a, a minor of mathematics here.
Yeah.
Get back to school, minor.
No!
Alright.
I'll hold it back. You deal with it, Bianca.
It looks pretty, it looks pretty hurt from that. It like shakes, but, uh, steadies itself and readies to attack. Okay. Uh, it's not right. Get down there. Uh, Bianca, it's your turn.
Alright, time to, uh, mess up this reindeer, hopefully.
Blasted.
And as you guys get closer, you hear more ka-chunk ka-chunks, uh, coming around the corner and more, uh, lights.
Unlike every other character I've ever played, Maple has a semblance of AOE.
Holy shit, you just magic whiffed the piss out of this thing.
Whoa.
Okay.
That's a lot of darts.
Four, seven, ten, fourteen.
I wish it didn't roll the ball separately, but.
Seventeen, twenty-two points of bam.
Ha, le, ja, ah.
Please tell me it's dead.
That was a twenty-two?
Twenty-two points of damage.
It is still up.
Oh.
Remember, I'll hold it back, just get some distance from this thing, I don't want it to target you. Back up, Bianca.
Alright, I can handle myself, but, okay.
Not as well as me in the front. If you recall, Fitz has always had, uh, very high AC, even if he, uh, it's not, not that built.
That's true.
The robo-deer blares a horn and it hurts your ears. And just flashes red, and you feel like it's meant to frighten you, but for some reason, it has no effect.
Oh, that's weird.
Your stomach gurgles.
Oh.
Oh no.
Very nice. Thank goodness for having a hag fetus something.
Mm-hmm. A delicious feast, one could say.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Perhaps for heroes.
Oh, yes. Uh, are we supposed to get ten HP for that?
Oh my god, you're right.
Deal with it later. Deal with it later.
Okay. I didn't wanna reveal it right away, because if I had said, oh, you did the heroes feast.
Yeah, yeah, don't, don't worry about it.
Then everyone would drink the soup, but everyone drank the soup anyway.
Woohoo!
So we got heroes feast?
Yep, y'all got heroes feast.
Yeah. I should probably roll for that then.
Okay. And Fitz, it charges you.
Huh, he puts his sword and his gun up, ready to deal with it.
It goes in and see, I forgot I had to do whisper rolls.
Whisper?
Whisper.
Slash W space. Whisper, yeah, you can do the slash W space, or there's like, since you're the DM, there should be a thing at the top with the dice. You can make, you can click like GM roll or whatever.
Oh, right, the GM roll.
And you can just click that dice that you need.
Alright, Fitz, what is your AC?
Uh, it is twenty-three with the armor that you gave me.
Okay. It bites right into your gleaming armor and can't seem to pierce it.
Neon, do you approve?
I'm holding it off.
Six and a nine.
Six, nine!
Oh yeah!
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
We're totally in tune.
Next number strength again.
So.
Is there any more ten?
Anyone in the opposing party can give me a investigation check to try and locate and move towards.
Investigation, you say?
Like only one person or everyone?
Don't worry, I'll find you.
You have a really good sense of where they are, but you're currently locked in the jaws of a robo-deer.
Well, I got an idea.
Robo-deer seems to hunger for flesh. Ah, mooed.
Not, ow, it's not mooing.
Alright, uh, Monroe the cold, can you give me an investigation check?
Can do, miss. But I'm not good at these.
You just crashed it, what you mean?
Good enough. Yum, you rolled, I use me, oh boy. Somewhat Monroe's built, built different. Built in the mind.
Alright.
Doesn't give a green flash? Like it used to.
Is it supposed to?
Uh, it used to, for even skill checks, it'd give you a green if you rolled a nat twenty, or wild, or red if you rolled a one.
Fair, fair.
Might only do it for attack.
I forgot to put on battle music.
You're good, you're good.
How dare you? I'm so mad.
Alright, Monroe, with the psychic link, you're able to get a good sense of where they are, and you start sprinting towards them. You still feel like it's gonna be another round before you can get to them.
You can psychically feel the jaws of something snapping upon, uh, Fitz as you are running your way there.
I turn and grab the nearest person who is not engaged in this combat. I'm assuming it's both Maple and the, the moon elf?
Yeah, Maple and the moon elf are not engaged.
I grab Maple and the moon elf, and I turn and say, "Quick, I found the thing to stab," and I start running in the direction of the, the rest of the party.
Uh, Mrs. Claus starts clop-clopping after you.
Oh, I, I, I look back and say, "Quick, Mrs. Claus, the cat intestines."
She lassoes the cat gut around all, uh, all three of you.
I grab the cat gut in my mouth like a horrid, horrid, uh, reindeer or horse with a bridle and just take off in that direction.
Alright. I'm just imagining like everyone is riding the care wolf.
That'd be funny, yeah.
The, the horror as Monroe realizes in his hybrid form, the cat gut does not taste unpleasant.
Ooh.
You feel, you feel compelled to compliment Mrs. Claus on the flavor.
I do.
Thank you, dearie. Uh, while in your hybrid form, you do feel compelled to be nicer around the, for those around you.
Monroe's conscious of this and greatly displeased, but he doesn't have time to bitch about it right now.
Okay. Uh, and another member of the holly jolly hive mind is gonna come around the corner. But it hasn't had enough movement to, uh, do anything besides that. And.
Bianca, I'm going to need you to back up.
Fitz, it's your turn again.
Uh. Fitz will point his, uh, put his sword, uh, in front of him, and he will close his eyes, deepen his thoughts, open them, and then in a split second, a flash of lightning, uh, shoots out. Where the hell is my buttons? Button, 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 button.
Rest your buttons.
My buttons! Casted! Are you fucking kidding me?
Lightning bolt not working?
It's not an attack goal. Wait, I'm just gonna roll the actual thing that's supposed to be rolling. Where the hell is, I'm gonna open up my spells on my left, and I'm gonna look at lightning.
I like how your lightning bolt rolls a D twenty. That's not right.
Ah, it's, uh, pretty dumb. It's not, it's not right. Alright, so that is, uh, these things will give me some sort of saving throw. What is the saving throw?
X.
Dexterity saving throw. As, uh, yeah, Fitz casts lightning bolt, but technically it's a sword strike because we like using Demon Soul's references here.
Alright.
Best I can do is a Bloodborne reference, I'm sorry.
Fuck it, let's go with this silly ass battle music.
I mean, what you were playing was pretty solid, not gonna lie.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Alright, it just, oh, okay.
Yeah, that shit was slapping.
It was pretty slapping.
Alright, I'll just play that one again, cuz I forgot, I had the loop message on, uh.
Forgot to enter in the loop.
Yep, forgot to enter in the loop.
I understand.
So yeah, you're looking for, okay, looking for DC seventeen.
EC seventeen?
Yeah, DC seventeen or eat thirty points of lightning damage.
I don't wanna eat thirty points of lightning damage.
Open up, motherfucker.
Aw, man.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Let's see, what is their dexterity?
This is just like whenever my dad calls for a shot in my mom's honor. Uh, and it has to be tequila, cuz of course it does, and I hate tequila.
Oh.
EC seventeen?
Mm-hmm.
First one passes, second one fails.
Yay!
First one would be the guy that's technically in front of me, would be the first guy we're fighting.
Yep, I guess so.
Fifteen lightning damage. At least I'm assuming.
Ah, ah, ah! And then, uh, it fritzes out.
It fits us out.
Blows smoke and falls into the sewage. And its light powers down with a satisfying.
The exact noise all robots make when they die, frankly.
Yep, and the one behind him takes thirty points of damage. Demooch?
Alright.
That is Fitz's turn. I guess bonus action does nothing. High five's Bianca. That's it. Turn.
Alright, Bianca, what you doing? Bianca?
Muted? Question mark?
I'm like, more of the same, I think.
Alright, uh, slap. Slap that dingo.
You're full of fun turns of phrase today, Evie.
It's the alcohol.
Oh.
So four, seven, nine, thirteen, eighteen, twenty points of magic missile damage.
You're really burning through these buckos.
That's the hope and the dream.
Make sure to save some for the boss.
Yeah.
We never save.
Everyone knows that the best defense is a good offense.
Yeah, everyone knows the best defense is burning all your resources before the final boss.
I mean, it is a good defense, you just can't do it in the final boss.
Everyone knows that the best defense is air.
Yeah, let's do it.
I haven't felt that in a very long time.
So, Fitzroy, we're charging at ya.
Oh, he eats another one.
And this other one eats you.
Hmm.
And we've got a.
Attempts to block it. Uh, Fitz will cash heal.
I think you're still whispering all these rolls, Evie.
That's fine, that's part of the game.
The intent.
Okay.
I don't, I don't want y'all, like, I haven't programmed any of it in, so I'm just kinda doing the math in my head.
I see.
Uh, actually Fitz will not cash shield. I guess he'll eat it. Delicious.
Okay.
I wanna burn all my spell slots before the boss. You'd be able to kill this. Unless it does like fifty points of damage, then I just ate shit.
Alright, we are gonna take eleven points of piercing damage.
So any more after that?
And thirteen points of psychic damage.
Okay.
And uh, while it ha- in like this one biting the same spot as the other uh, reindeer, kinda crunches through your armor a bit more. And starts to damage your arm as, as it says. Holly, jolly.
Don't talk with your mouth full.
Uh. Owie. Well, there goes my twelve temp HP. Did I have any temp HP from the feast?
Uh? You should.
Cuz if it's higher than twelve.
It's two D ten. Yeah.
If it gets higher than twelve, then that makes a difference. If it don't, then it don't.
Alright.
Do we roll that individually or does Evie roll it?
Eve.
Oh.
Should be for all of us. It's just a flat roll, should be.
I mean, you could take the, you can just take the roll I did. I rolled it earlier. It was uh, fifteen.
Oh, what'd you do?
Okay.
Okay, fifteen HP.
Fifteen was meant to be. I will subtract fifteen from that total. So that means I take what? Nine points of damage? Okay. Yep.
Alright.
First, the mach- machine's turn is over.
And from out of the corner, one more jumps into the sewage and starts moving around and you see the searchlight peering under through the murky glittery water. And it comes up and it starts going for Bianca.
Wow, that thing moved like crazy.
Forty movement speed.
I'll do it.
Unfortunate.
Me. Alright. So Bianca, twenty-five to hit.
That's, that's gonna hit.
Imagine if the answer was no try again, that'd be so cool.
Right? Now Bianca's AC is like fifteen or something.
It's seventeen now, actually.
Ooh, woo.
Alright.
That's more than I got.
Eleven piercing damage. Nineteen psychic damage.
Oh, shit.
It's true what they say, the barbarians really don't uh, get that much AC.
No, but you have a giant slab of meat that is your face that compensates.
That's true.
And I'm not a barbarian, I'm a sorcerer.
No, I was talking about me. But I remember in our other campaign when you were barbarian, you you mentioned often you're low AC.
Yeah.
And I was like, huh, I wonder if she just didn't build very good, but nope, it's just that way.
Alright.
Should be that way.
Now, other party, give me some dagum investigation checks.
More.
I'm just going to help the one that's actually able to find things.
That's a great point.
Alright, you help the dog that you're riding on.
Wait, I have to make multiple checks to find them?
Yep.
Okay, sure, that's fine. Let me see here. I I am helped.
I'm gonna throw one out there just, just so I can.
I give you guidance, so you have
Ah, easy. I got a d20.
Fuck yeah, boy.
Or nat twenty, I mean.
Let's see. And I'm being helped, so that means I have advantage.
Yes, you do. Although I will say like the uh, reindeer are the last in the initiative order and they're, and it's almost certain that y'all are getting to them this turn.
Twenty.
How's a couple of twenties treat ya?
Fantabulous. You guys approach and you see the other members of your party beset by two robotic reindeer. You really should've listened to the fear mongering about Boston Dynamics while you had the chance.
This joke is lost on me, I'm afraid.
Kick it in its knees, bully it.
Bully that dog.
Bully it.
Burnt.
Alright.
May I run up and stab it?
Yeah, can we attack this, this round or?
You sure can.
Nice.
Stab time. No, as I run up, I I I say wubba wubba or whatever the name is to activate my, my new not flame tongue rapier to stab the robot.
Stinky, stinky binky, I think it was.
Yeah, the stinky binky.
I say stinky binky.
He said stinky binky.
Give me an attack roll.
Oh, my goodness gracious.
Shit.
The damage is correct. Uh, yeah, that's the, that's the damage.
Oh.
Uh, I rolled a d20 plus nine and then it looks like the actual damage went through correctly.
Okay, that's good.
Forty-seven? Is that enough to kill it?
Yeah, you roll up and you just blast the damn thing apart. Like it just flies off into pieces that dissolve from the acid of your sword. It is defeated and your fellow party member is safe.
Wow. I looked down at the sword and say, "Stinky binky," and then the acid goes away.
Nice.
Sparking melting bits of the reindeer fall into the glittery poop soup with a satisfying broosh.
Broosh.
Oh no, I could use some help here.
Alright, Maple, you're up.
Uh, as Monroe de-shifts from dog form into person form.
Oh, I stay in dog form.
Oh, you do? Okay.
Yeah, it gives me bonuses to movement speed and just sets my strength to fifteen and I also have damage resistance. Why the fuck would I ever not be in dog?
I, I, you know, you know what happened? I assumed that sword meant hands meant thumb meant human.
I'm in hybrid.
You're probably half, yeah, half wolf. I did forget about that part.
Yeah, I had it all. Look, just furry Monroe. Just remember furry Monroe.
Just like
Well, as, as Monroe comes to a halt then uh, Maple leaps from his shoulder. Uh, and as she travels past this reindeer, uh, you're ne- you're never gonna guess this next part, but she does attack it with her sword, her axe.
Okay.
It's barely up. Just eat it.
How's a twenty-nine treat ya?
Well, treats me just fine, but uh, this reindeer like catches that axe between its antlers.
Yeah, um, seventeen damage.
It stumbles for a bit. Flashes light. Boo. Powers down and collapses right on top of the other uh, robo deer.
Hell yeah.
Ba 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 ba, ba 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 ba.
The, the axe reabsorbs itself in the ma- uh, Maple's back.
Alright.
Well, that wasn't so bad.
Many thanks, Maple.
Indeed.
Uh, question, Savvy. Uh, when you took damage, you did apply your fifteen temp HP shield to that, right?
I did, yes.
Alright, perfect. Second.
Let's see, will this work?
No. Nothing will work out like that.
Very good. You're getting the hang of moving around here.
That was all Monroe. All I did was ride on his back.
Yes, you're a very good dog.
Ooh, woo.
I hope that the, the, I, I, I hope that the uh, the residue on your fur isn't um, too annoying.
I literally just stop and just start shaking left and right and just send it careening in every direction.
Ha, oh, yep, there it goes, okay.
Hmm. Well.
Monroe. You look at you look at Bianca and Fitz. They are hurt, but you're so happy you were able to help them. It's really nice to have neighbors like them. You should bring them a casserole later.
Arrgh, that sounds delightful.
Oh, red X of satisfaction.
Red X of satisfaction.
I think it's like a red Q of satisfaction, maybe. X is such a blatant letter.
Make sure you two do stick with us this time. Don't want you all getting lost.
Yes, my lady, of course. I wouldn't wish to split up from you.
Mrs. Claus uh, hands you a length of cat gut each.
I, I take it.
Gold you shall.
Mm-hmm.
Alright.
The only thing I know about cat gut is that it gets baited into um, like violin bows.
It's also used for thread and leatherworking.
Yes.
Or it used to be.
It also used to be used for condoms way back in the day.
That makes sense.
So versatile. Why did people ever stop using this?
Dot, Dash, why'd you stop using this stuff? Uh, Dot and Dash are too busy um, playing in the glitter.
Naturally.
Mm-hmm.
Fair, fair.
That is sewage water.
I don't think they have to worry about that kind of issue.
Yeah, they're stupid.
I don't know.
Visibly so.
I don't think they can get sick.
Yeah, I don't think it's stupidity as much as something we just don't have to biologically worry about.
I suppose.
Although, I do have resistance to poison damage.
Resistance and immunity are two different things.
Mrs. Claus picks them both up, casts prestidigitation on them and like ties more cat gut around them both.
Damn, she is all about this cat gut.
Listen, if it works, use it often.
I mean, li- I, hey, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not judging.
Monroe stops, looks in his backpack at the adventurer's kit he has that has fifty feet of rope in it. Stops gra- going for the rope, smells the delicious allure of the cat gut. Leaves the rope in his bag and just starts gnawing on the cat gut.
Delicious.
Monroe. As you um, pick up your rope, you're holding a two foot uh, length of it, just like kinda slack between your hands. You look away for a second without your hands moving or anything. You're now holding a five foot length of uh, rope slacked.
Slacked, as in like, it's just slack?
Yeah.
You've gained three more feet of rope. Congratulations.
Fascinating.
The fae wild's wacky and wild.
Physics and distances don't work here.
Monroe stares directly at the screen. Uh, and like in an old cartoon, like Tom and Jerry, he just looks and says, "How did I get roped into this?"
Ba da ba, ba da ba. Alright, everyone, that's it for this session. We'll see you guys next week.
You're staring at, you're staring into the fourth wall.
Yep.
And you see a green tiefling off in the distance. She's wearing overalls and uh, what looks like a trucker hat.
Hello, trucker hat Randy.
Oh, don't mind me. And then she waves and walks off.
I get it.
Trucker hat Randy might be my favorite Randy.
Oh, it is trucker hat Randy here. Ten-four, good buddy.
Randy is just slowly turning into a vampire.
That would be really funny.
If there's one thing that would improve Randy from what I know about her, it's immortality.
Randy would hate immortality.
That's why it would improve her.
Anywhere. Uh, let's keep going with uh, intelligence checks to navigate, so.
Who wants to do those besides me?
Uh, I'll take one from every member of the party.
You want investigation or straight intelligence?
Investigation, or if you can make a case for some other skill, go for it.
Okay, thirty-two.
Alright.
I just throw guidance and give him the help action cuz he's, it's just better to do so. He's like, nope, this is why I hired you.
Huh, my lady, allow me.
I'll make a weird case for deception and that Monroe was lying to himself and telling himself the place that he wants to be in the world the most right now is the workshop.
Yikes.
I'll take it. You briefly see a fae crossing. And you see a familiar tavern. And you see some barrels from a local cooper. And you know these barrels. You see them all around town, but you've only ever seen them in Waterdeep. And then it fades in your mind. And you start to see the path uh, up to uh, Santa's workshop. And uh, I think I'm gonna call a break here. And we'll meet back at eight.
Sounds good.
Alright. Uh, how are you guys feeling so far?
I like it.
Young, saucy.
Sausage.
Hell, yeah. Okay. See you guys at eight.
See you then.
Okay.
Break time.
Salve Emerson, seventy-three.
Maybe. Oh yes.
Cool. I wasn't sure, cause no one said anything for like two minutes.
I have to tell you shit.
Well, that's rude.
I'm rude now.
Yep.
Now? New year, new me.
I mean, you're a month late, but I guess it's fine.
New year, new me. I'm rude now.
I'm rude now, okay, okay.
Rude maple.
Yeah. Piss.
Is that just steam escaping her gelatinous form?
Uh, it's her shouting the word piss out loud, cause that's the worst word she knows.
Pretty bad.
Eh, pre- pretty good. Yeah, that's pretty rude.
Alright. So, let me stop the boss in Nova.
Aw, man.
Let's get some more Ghoul, uh, ghoulum dusk.
Some more who will it?
Some more hurdy-gurdy.
Oh.
Are you playing?
I'm always playing.
Probably thinking about it. I mean, I do hear something, so something's coming.
There's a big storm coming.
Yeah, I think it's just slowly building up to it.
I can feel that we're near.
Well, that's good. I've definitely been wanting to get this started.
As you've been traveling through the sewer, you've had more of those environmental flashes where it suddenly gets more, it suddenly gets warmer and more verdant, very briefly, and they've been increasing with frequency. But for the moment, most of the time, it's still very cold and icy.
Does Mrs. Claus have a suspicion as to why this may be happening?
Maybe they're working out too much. Heat's getting out there.
Overheating themselves.
Hmm.
That's what I suppose.
All things in moderation, as they say.
Yes, but they seem to do things in the excessiveness, so I imagine that could be the cause.
Likely.
Or whatever corruption is afflicting Jack Frost is now finally making a sway to the rest of this realm.
Ah, possible.
Dentally, but I guess.
His muscles are simply too big. His muscles are simply too big. A change in his soul is likely to affect the environment around him, especially here. He is a spirit of the season. And that might be changing.
Could be, but if that's changing, then well, I don't know. He has no business being here, I guess.
I'm wondering if we have time to fix it.
Well, we have to find out what it is first before we can even attempt to fix anything.
Are we sure that beating him into a pulp won't fix it?
We don't know.
That's probably step one. Even if it doesn't, it'll make me feel better.
You know, I have a hunch as to what might also make you feel better.
More liquor? A cigar?
Agg.
She reaches up and scratches you behind the, between the ears.
Aw.
I hate how much I love this. Kinda messed up, yeah.
Oh, good monstrosity.
I find that so degrading.
So do I. Hein, hein. Thud, 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 thud. Like itching uncontrollably.
I am so sorry for this.
How about you a bone if I had any? We're nearing the factory. Is there anything?
What's the next steps? Yeah, yeah, what are the next steps? Anything that we want to take care of before we get there?
Exactly.
We have a short rest.
Probably the injured ones want to short rest, and then we can get going.
I can keep watch. I'm used to that.
Okay. So you guys are short resting?
Yeah, I think so.
I don't need to. I'm at max everything.
I'm also at max everything. That's why I'll keep watch.
Yeah, you guys can just chill.
Also keeping watch.
Alright. Maple, can you roll me a d100?
I sure can.
Woohoo!
Ah, so close. Sixty-five.
Alright. Nothing happens.
Hmm.
Oh!
Heal ten HP.
The environmental shits are happening with greater frequency as you're, as you're resting.
Ew.
Say again?
He said ew.
I heard environmental shits.
Gross. I mean, we are in a sewer.
Mm-hmm.
I heard the same thing, but I know what she meant.
Fair enough.
I, um, I thought about having a sewer, and I was wondering like, wait, would the fae even have a sewer? Do the fae poop? And I looked it up, and there's apparently a Jeremy Crawford tweet saying they have the glitteriest poops.
Hmm, yep.
Yeah, they probably wouldn't have a sewer system per se, but they definitely would have glittery poops.
The fae are whimsical.
Yeah, but they're like more natural based from what I understand of fae, so a sewer system would be pretty modern versus natural.
You would be surprised at how old some sewer systems are. Like, there, there are evidence, straight up evidence of some ancient Egyptian, like, civilizations having the
Yeah.
The equivalent of a sewer system.
I don't mean like modern, as in like, you know, modern timing, modern as in like tech, like advanced, like, uh, less natural.
Ah, I see.
Like fae is more the natural world, sewer system is more methodical, it's not really a fae thing.
Well, from, what I, like, I did a small amount of research, so I'm not going to step to the people who've been doing D and D.
You're the DM. You can just say, well, my fae do have sewers.
Oh, yeah.
It's your world, baby.
If this is what you want, is what you do. Like, don't.
Yeah, girl.
Don't take what I'm saying.
You can call us the goat or people.
Yeah.
In the fae wild, the, uh, most, like, civilian, like, urban areas tend to be reflected as the most desolate or like, empty regions where it's just fully nature in the fae wild. And the inverse is normally true for the, um, like, more uninhabited areas. The uninhabited areas in the prime material tend to be where like fae establishments are. And since the North Pole is like the most remote area in the whole, like, prime material, I figured it would probably be the most, like, similar to civilian life uh, in all of the fae wild.
Hmm. Santa's shop, just like billions of elves lived up, live up there?
And they're all pooping constantly.
All the time.
Never not pooping.
Mm-hmm. And I don't know if it's still the case in the Forgotten Realms, but I know in Greyhawk, because I read a Greyhawk-centric, uh, fae-themed book once, that they do have cities and sewers. Uh, uh, there was a fairy that had to go back home for various political reasons, and they, they literally escaped through their, their sewer system.
They're interesting.
They don't need to poop, but they do it anyway because they think it's funny.
Hmm, brilliant. Unironically, I could see that. And also, like, are you telling me that the whoopee cushion wasn't a fae invention? Hmm.
I mean, I could imagine them doing something like the whoopee cushion, but with an actual bladder.
That's also true.
You learn more, you learn more than you would like about, uh, fae digestion. As you see Mrs. Claus, uh, sort of upchuck what looks similar to an owl pellet.
I hate it. What did she eat? What, what, what kind of skeleton is in there?
Ah, you see some flanges.
Are those just fingers?
Probably, and then she kicks it into the sewer.
Right. Okay.
Alright, how long does Hero's Feast last?
The whole day.
Like a day?
Okay. I'm gonna put that on my DM screen just in case.
No, no, no.
Oh, I guess I can't put it there. Strange.
I got something you could put on your DM screen. I'm flipping you off right now.
Hmm.
Yeah, dude, again. New year, new me.
Are you done?
MILFing?
Loaf. Loafing around.
Oh.
I'm done with both.
I've never done MILFing. Yeah, Mon- Monroe's probably got a MILF problem.
I thought he was gay.
I am the MILF.
I thought he was gay.
Monroe, Mrs. Claus, uh, stares at you for a second, and then dabs you up.
I dab back.
Dabs you up is a high five.
I don't know what dab you up means.
Dab you up is a high five inexplicably.
Oh, okay, cool. I dab her up too. I, I high five.
It's like that high five where you come in from the side and you do a fist bump after.
Fuck, yeah. Monroe's all about that.
I don't know why it's called that, and it's not the same thing as dabbing where you, you sneeze.
I, I am so unaccustomed to modern lingo and Twitter speak that I'm like, is she hitting on me? Is that what that means? What happened to the chicken? I, I'm just so confused.
Dabbing is so old, I'm surprised.
Alright. Now we gotta figure out how to get up there. And she stares up at the light, uh, shining down from above, and you can see a grate where there's a lot of hustling and bustling and sounds of machinery.
We're trying to get up where exactly? How far up?
There's a long, there's a long tunnel, like, moving straight up.
How long is long?
If you were to try and measure it in, uh, like, prime material standards, to you, it looks to be maybe like forty, fifty feet off the ground.
I get out a ten-foot pole that I have. Uh, and I, I, I think to myself, use fae logic, this would be very silly if it reached, and I tried to use deception to lie to myself to tell the pole it will reach to the top.
Alright, uh, give me a deception check to believe in yourself.
Wow, that's like the most millennial thing.
Thing you've ever said.
Like, I do this every day, baby.
Holy shit. That was rough. And it works?
God damn.
I do this every day, baby. Damn.
Alright, you're poking your stick through the grate. What are you, uh, trying to, uh, what is your plan? Is your plan to climb up the pole?
Yes.
Alright. The rest of your party sees, uh, the stick poke through the grate, and suddenly it's, it feels a lot closer than it should. And you all can climb up it if you so choose.
I do so choose.
I will choose to do so as well.
And are you just barging through?
I'll give a, I'll give a little looksey peek with my pseudo pop.
Alright. You periscope up there.
Yeah.
It's largely surrounded by a lot of some presents. Uh, there are piles labeled to burn, there are pile, there are piles saying go out. There are various elves, um, carrying way more than what is safe. There's a lot of OSHA violations going on here. Uh, and you can hear uh, someone with a really bothersome voice off in the distance say, "Oh shit." I never figured out what his voice was gonna sound like.
Do it live.
Do it live!
Alright, boys. Just keep cranking it. Yeah, crank it. Uh, can you break, uh, I had to turn on my recording software. Can you break, can you just say that one more time?
Shut up.
It, it, it's already recorded. Don't you worry about it.
Oh, that's true. I'll just download your Twitch pod later.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I'm gonna YouTube poop this episode so bad.
Yeah.
He was cranking it.
Uh, Maple says, "Well, someone named Burn is getting a lot of presents."
Hmm.
And there are lots of elves. And they're cranking it.
Well, uh, yeah.
Move aside.
Have that.
Elves cranking it, I gotta see that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Science must know. Never seen hands move so fast.
Alright, uh, Monroe, are you also doing a perception check?
No, I'm kicking the grate open.
Oh.
Alright.
Monroe heard there was a party and he wants in.
Uh-huh. So I, I leap up with my sword drawn in full furry woo-woo form, and I just, it, I go to say a badass one line, but suddenly the voice of a feral Mr. Rogers come out, uh, comes out and says, "Howdy, neighbor." A little weird?
Good.
It's implied that I'm possessed by the soul of Mr. Rogers.
I, I got that for ya.
Yeah.
Here's a question. Why don't you play a warlock and Mr. Rogers is your patron?
That's unironically a fantastic idea.
I know, that's why I said it out loud.
Mm-hmm.
Most of my bad ideas I keep to myself in my brain cage.
Hmm. Yo, I do the same thing, that I put them in my campaign to make my bad ideas my players' problems.
Ooh.
Hmm.
You kick the grate open, and you find yourselves in a bustling, cheerful uh, yet painted over workshop, uh, where it once read Santa's workshop, it has been hastily painted over with the words, uh, "Jack's Madhouse." You're not buff enough?
I feel like they serve fantastic steaks here.
Listen, they are so, they're maxing their asses out on protein.
Oh, yeah.
Let me draw a little shape to show y'all where the grate is. Oh, nope. Let me get a different color. So, red right here is, that's on the GM layer. Gosh dang it, EV.
On a GM layer?
Happens, listen, uh, from what I've seen with other D and D games, you will not grow out of that habit ever.
I do it every session. I'm not even joking.
It's true.
Alright.
You guys do that thing? What thing?
This red rectangle here is, uh, where the grate is, and you can see an Aladrin standing on a to- standing on top of a bunch of Peloton boxes with ribbons on them.
Hell, yeah.
In the two burn pile is some beautifully wrapped, like, Christmas presents of all varying sizes.
I'm so jealous of Burn.
You can tell that a lot of love went into the wrapping of these, a lot of work. And each one is so unique and beautiful. Uh, but the to-go-out pile is clearly, um, very hastily wrapped exercise equipment.
Nice.
Jack Frost wants to give everyone exercise equipment for Christmas.
I mean, I mean, listen. I could use it.
Yeah. I think we all could use one, just because it's healthy.
Unironically, not the worst gift to give or receive. Exercise equipment is expensive.
It's true.
Yeah. Well, at least Jack Frost gives exactly what he delivers. It's in his name.
There is also, um, a lot of hokey diet advice books.
There it is.
Oh, no. Alright, not so good. Hmm.
If his name is not Jack Jacked, I'm gonna be upset.
And he turns to look at you as like the gate clatters open. And he has these big sunglasses on with swept back hair. He's wearing a tank top and a cape. Fur lined, fully red.
Gotcha.
And he
Wait.
He is cut up. He is like very toned in a dehydrated for a photo shoot kinda way.
Nice.
Oh, my.
Rockin' it.
I'm not sure what that looks like, honestly.
Like, uh, you know the typical bodybuilder look? Where their muscles are like super defined?
Mm-hmm.
They, uh, like, kinda dehydrate themselves to get that appearance.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It tightens the skin. Yep, it thins it.
That seems so unhealthy. Got it.
It is. Welcome to, welcome to bodybuilding, it's like being a model, more or less.
Welcome to Hollywood.
Mm-hmm. I say as a very fat man.
You guys can't see the health bars, right?
Nope. Nope.
Okay. And he's just, "Don't stop cranking, boys."
Oh, god, he's cranking up there.
And he, for the most part, looks like a strangely buff winter Aladrin. But one of his giant buff arms is green.
What's the rest of it?
Covered in verdant moss.
One arm is buffer than the other, you say?
No, it's just greener than the other.
Hmm. Must have gotten this specific workout with green sludge.
Uh, fits. A brick falls through the, uh, grate in the top of the factory and hits you on the head.
Damn.
Uh, you take one, you take a 1d6 plot damage.
Ow. Which is true damage, can't be resistant. Okay, I have a twelve temp HP that immediately recovers after that.
You take, uh, two, you take two shut-up damage.
Well, I cast temp HP right after that.
Alright.
I've never seen someone beg for an auto. I've never seen someone beg for an auto nerf so hard in my entire life.
Uh, 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 give it to me.
Okay.
Who are you gats?
Oh, are we still supposed to be in? Yep.
No, we're not in disguise.
Oh.
Anyways.
I saw you coming, but I don't know who you are.
Are we on the floor with him?
Honestly, we're your health coaches and we're about to test to make sure you're healthy.
I'm the ghost of Christmas cellulite.
I, uh, all right, so the grate is the reds, uh, square on the map. And you guys can like place, and if you're filing in, you can place yourselves anywhere around that.
I wonder if he'd believe the health coach's bit. That'd be funny.
Be funny, funny?
I am the evil winter spirit that represents all the fat you gain after you splurge on holiday treats.
No.
I am the fat that you gain.
Like Monroe, as you say that, he kinda like recoils and like sucks air through his teeth.
No, my words right there.
Sheepishly in the other direction.
By the way, I am doing this for a, a shockingly tactical reason. I have the ability to taunt an enemy creature, uh, that makes them attack me. And I'm
Nice.
And, and I'm beginning this with that, not like as an action to do it mechanically, but I'm, this is like a preamble to that.
Hmm. Reamble the taunt, let's go.
I mean, talking is a free action. I don't see why taunting can't be.
Hmm.
All right. Oh my gosh. Sorry, so, uh, someone said that you're his, uh, life coaches, right? Or his
Yeah, I said that. Yeah.
That was, that was an astral move.
That was an astral move.
Give me a deception check.
Deception.
Deception.
Oh.
Twenty-three.
Hmm. I thought I was doing pretty good with my nutrition. I followed every step in this.
Maybe you should have tried hitting every step on the way down.
You can always do better.
Can always do better.
In this book with the cover that says, "You're a fat fuck" on it.
My goodness.
Oh my dear god, you're handing those out to kids. That can't be good.
Dad?
Teddy?
Yeah, that's why I said, I
Was that too real? I'm sorry.
Because a book can only teach you so much.
Hmm.
Oh, right.
Real practice is important.
I'm eating kale and reindeer meat. I'm eating lentils.
You know, pound for pound, insects are actually the best source of protein.
That's true.
I don't think you're gonna find much of those out here.
Oh, yeah, baby. I love scorpions. I get them flown in.
That seems cool. I don't. I mean, we're gonna kill him because I want to get paid, but like.
Not killing him, remember?
You know, I think your rippling biceps might look really good with a flaming scorpion that says shredded along the bottom of it.
Oh, you mean this?
And he flexes and turns around and there are like, along his triceps, uh, multiple scorpions.
Yeah, there are.
With a tattoo that just says, "The Ginger Shred Man."
Nice.
Guys, I'm afraid I can't fight him. I love him and I cannot control myself.
Uh oh.
Remember, he's already claimed.
Dammit.
Uh, another wave, uh, like emanates out into the environment, passing verdant green and rolling moss all over the place, as well as fungus. And it lasts a little bit longer than normal, like almost thirty full seconds before it goes away.
Jack, you're an elemental being. Do you know what's up with that?
I'm changing, bro. I've maxed out. And it's time to go to the next level. I'm not letting myself or anyone else stay complicit or in place during the winter. There's gonna be no more winter, everybody. You can work out and be on your grind all year long.
See, you can technically do that even in winter. Winter just is tougher, but it is also good for testing.
Lived in ten thousand my whole life. Winter never stopped me.
It stopped so many, though.
But that is their choice.
You're staying inside, keeping warm by some stupid fire. Filling up on these big old meals.
They can certainly work out by the fire.
No one wants to work out by the fire. They want to sit and relax, get cozy and complacent.
I'd say speak for yourself, because I certainly don't do that.
Also, calories and carbohydrates, key parts of the solstice diet, are important for muscle growth.
Working out doesn't affect me at all, because I don't have muscles.
You don't get it, man. It engenders laziness in the people.
I can't argue with you on that.
I think that's debatable, because if one has to work all year long, it is actually unhealthy.
You should work all year long. There's no reason to stop working.
See, after a point, you hit a plateau because you haven't stopped, which is a problem. There is always a break day.
Ah, that's true. You'll tear your
What doesn't kill you makes you stronger.
Jack, though, but if you work too consistently, your muscles will tear and overall lower your long-term gains. Moderation is essential for muscle growth.
Hmm.
I don't think you and I are reading the same literature. Here, check out this book.
And, uh, he tosses another, like, nutrition and workout book towards you that is set to go out that says, uh, evade taxes and blast maxes.
Now we're talking.
Normally, I charge for my services, but I guarantee you whoever wrote this, I'm going to kill them for free.
Indeed. But as I said, who are you gonna listen to? A book or an actual life coach that actually does this for life?
She is a real life coach.
Look at this. Look at my na, look at my stature.
No one is their own life coach.
Uh, what is, okay, look.
Here to show me?
And then he, uh, like, pulls the curtain out and you see, uh, some dumbbells and a Peloton.
If you can beat me, I might just listen to you.
Bianca?
I'll step up.
All right. Not how I expected this to go.
Why did it ever?
Because I'm a life coach, I'm going to be like advising her so she can get advantage.
Yo.
All right, uh, first you're gonna go to the, uh, Peloton.
All right.
First to break down loses. Are you ready?
I nod.
Set.
Go! And he is going crazy on that Peloton. He is like blasting, uh, gosh, there's There's a song I know would be great for you. Uh, here we go.
Oh, there he goes. Bye, Chip.
And you're off.
All right.
All the elves gather around, uh, Jack. And they're like cheering and whooping and hollering. And the Pelotons raise into the air. And there's a projector in front of you both, displaying a mountain bike track. Um, with, uh, a lot of advertisements for Orange Taurus energy. Uh, popping up around.
I get it.
And the Pelotons are moving like left and right, dipping up and down. And it keeps going, and it keeps going. And, uh, Bianca, make me a constitution save, uh, constitution saving throw.
I'm, I'm not as good at con, but.
You will have a guidance.
All right.
Because I'm helping. That's the only way I can help in this one.
Uh, guidance is not for saving throws.
Is it not? Oh, well, fair enough. I'll cast. Actually, do I have bless in this form? I have to double check.
All right. You look over. Yeah, like elves are squirting water into his mouth, wiping sweat off his brow, and he looks at you.
I, I do have bless. So you can have a bless.
Oh, nice.
Like flashes a smile with the shine on his teeth and his big ass Kamida, uh, sunglasses. This reflects as there's another flash into the environment that makes it verdant green and warm, that lasts a full minute. All right.
The song said Heart of a Lion, and I feel like that's a little too close to Eye of the Tiger to get away with it.
Hmm.
A little bit.
Yeah, they're fine.
Okay. And the projector is showing a ramp and the Pelotons are starting to dip forward. And you're speeding up. The resistance, uh, on your pedals is going down and you're approaching a ramp. Jack is the first to clear it. And he like pops off his Peloton and does a trick. Uh, can you give me a dexterity check, uh, Savvy?
Oh, no. Okay. Oh, no.
Oh, not a saving throw, but a check.
There it is.
That, that's the wrong
Wow, damn. Describe, describe your cool, your sick-ass trick.
What's your dex mod? Because it's still a seventeen. Roll.
Uh, duh, duh, duh. Uh, that would be plus two instead.
Oh, no, you're equal. Nineteen.
Um, I'm gonna like lift my feet up and have like an icy aura like spread out as I like lift my feet up with my upper body strength and then go back down.
Um, a holly jolly drone with Orange Taurus branding comes by and catches your sick trick on camera.
Maple applauds.
And, uh, Jack Frost like looks a little more winded and ha, does that kind of like anime grunt like in disapproval. And redoubles his efforts to keep going on the track.
I'm just giving moral support. Good job. Good job, Bianca. Keep going.
How are you guys reacting to this?
Yeah, uh, I almost said Bianca. Uh, Ma- Maple is, is whooping and hollering at the cool trick. Uh, and fighting the urge to attempt to sabotage Jack's Peloton.
Astral is just
All right.
following along with Bianca, just making sure she's good. Watching her, ma, watching her health, making sure she, uh, gets water, you know?
All right. How are you, what are you doing, Fitz?
Wondering why we didn't just kill them all, but, uh, go Bianca, you know, fist up. Just cheering. Not much else he could do.
Uh, Jack like looks over at two of his goons and just says, "Get back to cranking, you idiots." And they like
You simply must crank it.
And they move, uh, back over to this box and they start tur, like turning a key on it again.
Does it have an immediately obvious effect?
Uh, no. You just hear, uh, like ears and clicks and whirs kinda.
I can distract this. I'll walk over and sort of kinda lean down next to the elf and go, "Hey, guys, I just heard the best protein shake recipe the other Also, did you know that raw eggs aren't actually needed to be eaten to gain all the protein? Cooking them loses nothing prote, uh, protein and nutrition-wise. My friend's a life coach. Want to hear more?"
Um, all right, some of that's true, but some of that's not, so give me, uh, deception or persuasion, your pick.
Deception, please. What, what was, what was wrong? You don't, you don't lose much when you cook eggs.
You don't. You gain things if you cook eggs, actually. Your body can metabolize more of it when you cook it.
Okay, would Monroe actually have a good recipe for a protein shake?
Eh, as, as a severe alcoholic, I'm pretty sure he could wing something.
True?
Wow.
You, okay, give me a persuasion check.
Could I make a deception anyway? Because that's a higher check.
Whoa.
You are trying to distract them rather than earnestly, uh,
Yay! Yay!
You gotta tell us, bro. And do you do anything to cheer Bianca on?
As I'm leaning down telling them, I put my thumb behind my back and give her a thumb up.
All right.
Oh.
Uh, I'm gonna say Bianca gets bardic inspiration on her next check.
Thank you.
Because everyone cheered for her.
While the elves are distracted, can I like sneak a pseudopod into the, into the box and see what's in there?
Um, give me a sleight of hand check.
I'm medium at those. I got a twenty.
Whoa.
We rolled hot tonight, ladies and gents.
No problem.
In the lid, like in the lid, uh,
You said there was like a key hole or something?
It's like a, um, you know how on, uh, old toys, they have a like turning key?
Oh, like a wind-up key. I see.
You wind it up? Or?
Like a Nidjia thing. I get it.
Right. It's too forcefully shut to, uh, open it, but you're a gooey, you're a gooey gal.
Yeah, if there's like a, if there's like a, what is it, like a one-inch opening I can squeeze in there? Something like that?
You kind of push past your limits. Um, enough to get your pseudopod through. And there's not a lot of enough to get your pseudopod through, and there's not a lot of light. But you see a lot of complicated machinery and armor within the box.
That seems bad.
It's like heavy metal plating. But it's hard with such low light.
Yeah.
Alright. Bianca. Give me one more Constitution save.
Okay.
You have bardic inspiration and a Bless. Though I don't know how big the bardic inspiration is.
Right, right. Uh, let's say it's a D-ten.
I mean, that's a twenty. That's nice.
Eh?
You're both really pushing it, like everyone around you is kind of astonished at each of your physical ability, but Jack is, you and Jack are really holding pace with one another. He has truly proven himself as the jacked Frost.
Astral's like, "Good job." "Good job, Bianca. You're doing it. You're doing great."
Um, as you pass an advertisement on the projected trail, uh, that's for the Innsmouth Gym that says, "Summon your elder quads."
Nice.
Love it.
Now, that one's an original that I'm proud of.
I'm also proud of that. Evie, Evie, I didn't know you had such a propensity for puns, but I'm kind of into it.
Yeah.
It's really great.
The elder quads.
The elder quads.
And you're like, you can see the finish line on the projector and it's up a huge hill. So now give me that strength check. To just blast your bike through.
There it is.
Nice.
Holy-
Don't, don't forget the D-four or whatever.
Yep.
Why are you rolling with disadvantage, by the way?
I don't know.
Wait, uh, okay, let's see. These details don't tell me... Oh, it's a fifteen.
Yeah, fifteen and then a five. Change.
Alright, so it's the same between the saving throw and the check. So we'll just go with the, uh, like roll for the saving throw first, and that's a twenty-three.
Yes, it is.
Jack falters. And his- he wobbles and he like gets his, uh, bearings back. But the tracker shows you ahead of him. And you're each rushing and pushing up the hill. He's gaining on you, but you're simply too fucking fast. You were like lightning up this hill. You have the legs of a god. You've never skipped leg day. And you blast through the digital finish line. And the Orange Taurus confetti cannons blast off. And-
Yeah!
Good job, Bianca. Knew you could do it.
Jack suddenly, uh, has a, uh, helmet that you didn't see before, and he like tosses it off in anger after he crosses it, uh, a few seconds uh, behind you.
I love that he put on a helmet specifically with the intention of hurling it off of- Very good.
Alright.
Jack? On the grind too much that you're grinding up your gears now?
You really should listen to those of us who trying to give you good advice on this.
He does look like genuinely kind of shaken by this. But he grits his teeth, resets himself and says, "It ain't over. That's just endurance. We still got one more test to go." And he lifts a big curtain off of some heavy, uh, barbells. Deadlifts.
Alright.
Anyway, that's when you add in the milk. Then you add in one to, one jigger's worth of lime juice, some simple syrup, and shake well.
Okay.
I've given them the world's worst recipe for protein shake. Brilliant.
They are like enrapt and, uh, Jack looks over in anger and just shouts, "Did I say you could stop cranking?"
Uh, when, when Jack's, a- a- as, as they're distracted and Jack's yelling at him, um, can I feel around in the box to try to uncrank their cranking? From the inside?
You know, yeah. Give me a, uh, give me another sleight of hand check.
Give me a crank check, bra.
Give me-
Guys, please, you- Really nicely, could I, could I make it an athletics check? Cause I'm trying to, I'm trying to turn the crank here, which is apparently very hard.
Crank it.
Uh... Now, are you trying to uncrank it from the inside with just your pseudopod?
Yes. It can manipulate things.
Yeah, can it manipulate things with the same strength as your main body?
Uh, manipulate an object over clothes, um, does not, oh, um, it works like, I see, it works like mage hand, I guess. Sort of.
Okay.
Mage, mage hands that can see and stuff.
That wouldn't be able to do it. Cause mage hand can only do like five pounds, so.
If Monroe, if Monroe gets the, uh, can convince the other guys to stop cranking again and get them to move away from the crank, I would say there's probably, uh, just enough cover to take that position and begin uncranking it.
Oh. Hold on.
What's a-
Better idea. I move around to this side of the box where no one can see me.
Alright.
Uh, and I place my axe and my single piece of armor gently on the floor, and I fully enter the box. If my pseudopod can get in there, so can I.
Fair enough. It's dark.
Dark. There's a suit of armor in here.
Not, it's like armor plating. It's not necessarily just a suit of armor.
I see. Can I, can I make out what it is? By like feel or whatever?
Uh, give me an investigation check with disadvantage.
Disadvantage investigation check is not going to go very well for your girl, but that's okay. No, never mind, seventeen.
What exactly are you doing over there, Maple, by the way?
Uh, these guys were, these guys here were cranking something in the box, so I tried to figure out what was in the box.
Are you saying this out loud?
No, I'm explaining to the other-
To the human that is Emil.
Yeah.
Okay, just making sure.
Yeah, so I'm, I was investigating the box and there was a hole in it that I could get a pseudopod in.
Alright.
And I was like, "That seems like armor."
Yeah.
So I put my whole body into the box. Cause I'm slime and I can get into any opening one inch or more.
Hmm.
You just can't not giggle while you say it.
Uh, I, I did have to leave my weapon and piece of armor out there, so I'll have to take a moment to re-equip that if it comes down to it, but that's fine.
Alright, while this is, while this is going on, are you entering, uh, who is entering into the lifting competition with Jack?
I assume Bianca again.
Not me.
He seems a little irritated that you're going again.
Let him be.
I love your wife.
I mean, yeah, if he's doing both, why can't she?
Alright. He puts on his lifting belt.
How's she looking, by the way? Feeling, need a little restoration from being exhausted or something?
You tell me, Evie-
Bianca kinda, uh, Bianca kinda smashed that, like, I think she's doing good, uh, recovering just by, you know, like having water and taking a breather.
Okay, just wanting to be sure.
But for flavor purposes, uh, you can, uh, or if there's just something you wanna do to like help her out, make sure she's in peak physical condition, go for it.
I was just wondering, cause I can cast lesser restoration on her, just make sure she's, she's peak. You know, where she's not tired, she can just keep on going. I can just flavor it as like, uh, giving her a very crisp drink of water and just subtle cast restoration. Just for the funsies. Cause water is important and he's keeping himself dehydrated, so I am like trying to like encourage water intake.
Yeah, I'll, I'll definitely take that ice water.
But he chocks his hands up, he puts on his lifting belt. And he does like a little bit too theatrical, some stretches. And he starts pulling a bar up.
Oh, now this is lifting music.
Oh, shit.
Yeah!
You got this, Bianca. I believe in you.
The plates, the plates clang against the bar. You read the sign inside, it says a gazillion pounds.
Whoa! That's so many pounds!
And he brings it up to his chest. Or like he brings it up to, uh, his waist. And then his chest. And he begins to raise it over his head. And he triumphantly, uh, brings it up. And he passes the first phase.
Huh.
Bianca, are you ready to reach toward the gods?
Let's go. Am I doing an ability check or save?
You are doing a, uh, you can do either an athletics check or just straight strength check.
Uh, is she, like, uh, she, what the hell is that thing called? Is she pushing a bar up from her chest straight up?
Uh, yeah, deadlift.
Oh, she's doing deadlifts, okay. Uh, so she doesn't need a spotter or anything?
No, she doesn't, um-
Damn.
How the twenty-three she doesn't?
Don't forget to roll a D-four.
On the lifting belt that Jack Frost is wearing, um, it says, uh, in quotation marks, uh, more weight Giles Corey.
That's funny.
God, Bianca's busted. Holy shit. What the fuck?
Bianca, you take those bazillion pounds and you lift it like it's just a, like it's a fucking bagel.
The hell?
The bagel on the other side!
That was the first lightweight thing that came to mind.
You know what? That's fine.
It's kind of weight-shaped.
Bagels are good.
Bagels are good.
Alright. Jack like looks over, sees you not really struggling with it, and he says, "Well, that's just the first phase, baby." And he moves over to the second weight on the side. And it's stacked so high and the plate says one gorillion pounds.
Whoa!
Oh, god. This is hilarious, Evie.
I'm having a great time.
Why did I, why did I bother trying to balance combat?
I don't know.
Ooh!
This is a combat!
This is a combat!
This counts.
This is combat!
This is a type of combat!
I'm being stealthy as fuck. Y'all are lifting weights over there.
Yeah, like this is a kind of count, like not every combat is technically a battle.
Alright. Okay.
But a fight can still happen. You never know.
That's true. One of us could jump him at any moment.
His ego might not be able to handle like being beaten fair and square.
Think about it like this. Combat is simply a series of attack ability checks.
True.
As, uh, as Jack Frost begins doing his, uh, his set, can I try to distract him?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. I'm gonna do a miming performance of him, uh, attempting to lift the weight, uh, pathetically with a performance check. Is that all good?
Yeah, let's see.
Okay, straight roll. Oh, my fucking god. That's a nat twenty plus four.
No problem.
Yeah.
We're all of us so good at D and D. Ugh.
Look at me, boys. I'm Jack Frost. I got the hustle. I know how to grind my, ooh, my back! I grind it so hard, my back is gone.
I've pooped and pissed myself.
Oh, shit. Oh, my god. Just some residual ooze.
He grits his teeth and like... Uh, make me a dexterity saving throw.
Huh?
Oh, sure. Where is that button? Right here. Let's fail this. Oh, I-
Ah, easy to win. What are you gonna fail? You got a plus three.
Alright, and, um, you also taunted him. Uh, oh, wait, Maple, you're in the, you're in the box.
No, that was, that was me, Zoe, the player doing this.
Okay, okay.
I'm currently in the box, um, investigating.
Investigation.
The icicle falls down from the ceiling, but you dodge it like really deftly.
Ugh.
He does another like frustrated anime protagonist grunt, uh, and like rushes over to the bar and lifts it a little too haz- hastily. He's making this check with disadvantage.
Hell, yeah.
Alright. And he brings it up to his knees. And to his chest. And he falters and it slips. And he can't bring it above his head.
Oh, no, bro. I guess I grind it too hard! There's nothing left, no juice! Don't shame me at my gym!
Yikes.
I begin sorting through a box of t-shirts that the elves wear for beyond the celebration.
Alright.
Where's your list, Evie?
Okay.
I've got one.
You know, alright, roll me a D-twenty. And if it's, uh, a number that I've already done, or it goes beyond like what I've already got here, then, uh, pick from yours. Alright. Uh, you've got one that is, uh, elf-sized and it says Hench Press.
Oh, it'll do.
And it's, uh, a goblin, a kobold. And a, um- And a, um, gosh, what's, what's another like henchman monster?
Bullywogs.
And a bullywog. Um, all lifting bars.
I love it.
Whoa, Monroe, that shirt is totally hench-pressive. Unlike this. Unjacked, Jack.
Well. You can't just call him that.
Got a pebble in my shoe or something, bro. Can't get my good stance up.
Just like those arms, totally pebbles, brah.
It's a good thing you have a pebble, at least that way you could say you have some stones.
Man, this guy is getting eviscerated right now.
You know what, uh? Jack Frost takes, uh, one D four burn damage.
He's fucking roasting over there. The world gets a little bit hotter.
Hey Evie, what is my, what is a seventeen investigation check give me in this box, by the way?
This is it's some sort of compressed contraption, it has what feels like claws. And is that a flamethrower?
Holy shit.
Our deaths will be glorious.
Is there, can I find an entry hatch of any kind?
I mean, there's the lid on top.
There's a lid on top, excellent. I would like to slither inside.
Okay.
I was planning on these guys, I was planning on stopping these guys from cranking.
Hmm.
But now, now I wanna get in the mech.
Make me a stealth check.
Stealth check. Um. A nine, do I have anything I can do about that? Um.
Unless anyone's earned any inspiration.
Oh my gosh, I haven't been thinking about that. Uh, you know what, Emil, you get inspiration for your taunting, because it's been really fucking good.
Yeah, I'm, can I nominate Sam for that too? Because the stones line was inspired.
That was also pretty fucking spectacular, Sam, you get an inspiration point.
I burned my inspiration on Maple before Sam can.
Valid, I'll allow it.
God damn it, I'm so not stealthy, I'm slimy.
Fuck it, I'll do it too.
Hell yeah.
Fuck yeah.
Okay. There it is. Nineteen, I'm so slippery, I'm so slimy.
You slip into the box and you are now, uh, with this big strange compressed robot.
I thought I was getting into the robot.
Huh?
I thought I was getting into the robot.
Uh, you are just getting into the box, sorry.
Oh.
I, I kinda thought you were already in the box, but
I also thought that, which is why I was trying to get into the robot.
Oh, okay, okay.
Robot.
You can't find any place to pilot it. You feel like what might be a saddle on the back, but uh, give me another investigation check.
Alrighty. Seventeen?
You feel around and there's an antenna on it.
An antenna. It's remote controlled. Well. If I can't pilot this thing. Then nobody can.
Uh, Astral. You're kind of, you've been sort of leaning in that area. And just chilling and supporting Bianca from where you are. But unfortunately, uh, something behind you begins to move.
Oh. Do I notice? Because I'll look.
Uh, you do. And it, it's almost like a box shuffled around.
Um. I don't know, I will
Is there a gimmick in here?
I mean, there, there could be, there could be.
Who knows?
The hidden elf resistance is in here with us.
She's, she's gonna look in that general direction and, um, I don't know, I guess she is I don't know, um. She, she's just gonna be a little confused and then she will like, i- is it like heading towards her or is it heading towards Bianca?
It just kinda jiggled around, like it's in this area next to, um, you and Fitz.
Got it, um. Yeah, I guess. Fitz, you're a halve elf, right?
Uh huh.
Um, I think he should be fine. I'm gonna cast sleep in this area, just because I don't, I don't know what's here, but I don't wanna be aggressive either, so I will just set a cast sleep.
Oh.
Like here, so.
Okay.
Like whatever it is, I'm, I'm attempting to put it to sleep. Uh, let me
Ping that spell and roll your damage.
Sleep?
Uh, yes, sleep works on damage, right?
No.
It doesn't do any damage.
No, 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 like, not that it, uh, does damage, but it like figures out
It targets like certain HP values, that's right.
Yeah, it's just based off, why won't it let me ping the spell, it just lets me have remove it, but it won't let me actually ping it. That's so weird. Um. Man, I really do not like this stuff.
None of us like the new sheet.
It needs a lot of work.
There you go.
Alright, okay, so I guess it's just a DC saving throw.
It's not even, oh, wait, no, this is the, the new sleep, but I'm, I'm using the old version, because you said we could pick one. I don't, it's, it's just based off HP, so let me pull up the actual sleep spell. The five E version.
You don't want them to do a saving throw? I think saving throws I just changed this picture, I didn't really change his race or anything, because he was undead before, and so he still
I'm giving, I'm upcasting it, so I have to do the math real quick.
Alright, uh, while you're doing that, Bianca, can you give me, um? Give me an athletics, uh, check to lift one gorillion pounds. You do have advantage, but
Just don't forget the, just don't forget the D four.
D four?
Yeah, D four.
That's a ten.
That's a sixteen.
Uh, what?
She has advantage.
Alright.
Yep, alright.
Do I, by any chance, have any inspiration? Because I have a feeling that's not gonna be enough.
Hmm.
I mean, you won the, she won the first thing, she should get inspiration from that, right?
She went handily or something?
Yeah. Wouldn't she get inspiration for that?
Alright, you have one inspiration for winning the first challenge. And making, um, and giving Orange Torres so many dollars.
Burn him if you got him, money.
Alright. You strain and you just barely, uh, like get it over your head. And you look over at Jack Frost and he is furious, he is exhausted, but he has fire in his eyes, it's not over yet. And he gestures for the elves to bring in the next bell and they're rolling in. Uh, the next set of weights, it's such a thick stack of plates. And on the side, it says one grum billion pounds.
Oh no.
Also, I hope whatever was here falls asleep, I don't know.
Yeah, um. The present
Trying not to show my feet.
A present near the top of the stack, uh, like, begins to fall over and it has a little snob bubble in it as a mouth appears like down the center line and you have
It was a gimmick.
This, uh, this present mimic to sleep.
Gimmick.
Wow.
Yeah.
It's snoring half, it's like snoring with the little snob bubble on it. And it like has the honk shoe. It's almost cute.
That is adorable. That is adorable. He's like, oh, that's so cute, that's
I don't know why everyone thinks mimics sucks so bad, I love mimics, they're adorable.
I love them too, in old editions, they actually could talk.
Yeah.
Worse.
I think they canonically got dumber as time went on.
They did, well, they had like the, old edition said older mimics got smarter as they aged. And they actually weren't always hostile, they, they sometimes could just be little guys.
Yeah.
That's what I'm talking about.
Let's see, can Jack lift one grum billion pounds?
Holy shit. God can't lift one grum billion pounds, are you kidding me?
Do we get a chance to, like, mess with them or anything, or are we?
Uh, I have made the rolls, but I will say any actions you take against him now will, uh, decrease his score rather than give him disadvantage.
Okay, cool, cool.
So.
Uh, I'm busy lying in wait for this robot to activate and then I can take control of it, hopefully, or snap the antenna off, one of the two.
I'm just supporting Bianca, that is my focus, so. That's me.
Alright, it's, it's, it's up to the two boys, if they want to attack.
I'm going to intimidate, I'm gonna try and like freak him out to intimidate him. I'm gonna whisper to the elves who are supposed to be cranking loudly whisper, like whisper shouting.
Did you guys know that the guy, or that the girl that Jack is lifting against is the daughter of Oriol? She killed a god, he doesn't stand a chance.
What, what? Is he? Is he dissing on our bro? I think he is, bro.
I'm not dissing, I'm warning, I, I hope Jack can make it, but to defeat a god.
They're doing like uh, sort of team skull poses. As they're, uh, as they're talking back and forth and they're just like, no way, our guy, our bro, our coach, coach, like Coach Frosty? He's stronger than anyone, he's the strongest guy I've ever seen, he's so maxed out, dude. Gave us all these books, he's so smart.
I look down and I lie
For breakfast.
I, I look down and I lie through my teeth as I say, that girl over there, Bianca, she crushed Ornel's head between her thighs.
At that, they're like, whoa. No foolin?
No foolin. Like a watermelon, he ju- she juiced her.
I heard my cousin Brody got juice like that once.
Aboveboard, good for Brody.
What the fuck?
I hear it's a good way to go.
The best.
Uh, what are you, what are you trying, what are you trying to do here, uh?
I'm trying to, I, I have whisper shouting so Jack can hear me and I'm trying to intimidate and scare him.
Uh, roll me an intimidation check.
I'm bad at these. Actually, I'm not, why did I pick intimidation for proficiency? Fucking, oh well, we ball.
Assassin?
That's true.
Yeah.
Fuck yeah, baby.
Fuck, that's good, I'll, um.
Does Jack have flashes of his head being burst between Bianca's legs in terror?
Uh, he does.
Blessed.
And like you kinda, in an angle that kinda makes it so that the, uh, shine from his glasses isn't reflecting his eyes and he's just kinda giving the one punch man stare or, um, gosh, what is it? Uh. What's her name? The elf, the elf from Delicious in Dungeon, why can't I remember her name?
Marcel?
Marcel, Marcel. Like that look in, like, the second episode that she gives, here.
There are many Marcel expressions to choose from, that girl emotes a lot.
Jack looks like this, this is his expression at that.
Perfect.
I'm amazed that you knew that down to the episode.
I, um, I watched it recently because I've been, I wanted to do it to take my mind off of everything.
Valid. We should all get together some night and do a watch party.
I should drive down to North Carolina to see you guys.
I meant on Discord, but that also sounds rad as fuck, there's some hella good restaurants down here.
Yeah, I also need to give you that grum card I found, but
Oh, true.
Uh, I'm gonna say that knocks, uh, that knocks four points off of his score.
Fuck, I didn't expect such results, thank you.
It's one point down for every five points on the die.
You rolled a twenty. And I liked that roleplay. So.
I should be coating my entire body with just like a layer of ice crystals.
But he still looks like he's about to lift it above his head without too much trouble.
Somebody style on his balls quickly.
I'm in a box.
Uh, I guess I'll try and say something?
Go for it.
You know, the sad thing about Frost is that alright, okay. Jack, you bring the frost, which is tough and all, but Bianca brings the fucking ice storm. One that coats the earth in frost for eternity. You couldn't compete if you wanted to. It was fixed from the beginning. That's the best I got. Uh, performance, performance. Let's go, oh my god, my luck is actually insane.
He's just kinda like, what? And he falters and kinda slips the bar a little bit. Uh. And that knocks it down, so he once again doesn't make it. Or wait. I'm gonna say the, uh, the elves next to him are gonna try and contest that and argue, nah, boss, you're the greatest, you're so strong, there's no one colder or stronger than you, or hotter, yeah, you're hottest too.
Hot and cold cancel each other out, dimwits.
Doesn't that mean he's lukewarm at best?
They're like kinda thinking and it doesn't do much to inspire Jack and
It sounds like you're saying he's lukewarm.
He drops the, he drops the bell, it slams on the ground and like the word lukewarm is hanging above his head in his mind.
Oh man.
Pretty fucked up.
Alright, let me please not fuck
They're calling Marty McFly chicken.
Said some shit, but I think that might be fighting words, Becca, I think you might have pushed it.
It's what they said, though.
I think, I think you might have caused him to, uh, engage combat.
Okay.
Everyone, cross your fingers, I don't fumble this, I don't have any more inspiration.
Uh, I believe in you.
Hey, you got a twenty-four.
Hey, twenty-four.
Uh, wait, do you have advantage?
Yeah, she has advantage, cause I'm helping. Yeah, I'm helping.
Okay.
Okay.
Don't forget guidance.
You are her life.
See, there you go.
You bring the bar up to your knees. It's the heaviest thing you've ever touched. One grum billion pounds? It feels like you're lifting a fucking whale. But you bring that whale up to your chest and you strain. It pushes against you. You feel like you could tip over at any moment.
You got this, Bianca.
But you reassess your footing and keep your balance. And with one final push, you slowly but surely raise it up to the sky, proclaiming that you are the toughest and strongest dude in the North Pole. And it's undeniable. Jack is devastated. He's blown away, knocked over at the radiant power of your overwhelming gains. And he's instantly knocked back as if hit with a thunderwave into a stack of boxes, and he's knocked out.
Good job, Bianca.
Yeah!
Put down this monstrous weight.
A wave of dread and sorrow washes over him as his muscles fade. And the spring eladren arm slowly fades until it's blue all the way to the finger- his fingertips. And the environment around him begins to settle until it, like, stabilizes into the regular, cold, yet cozy inside winter season.
Wow.
And I'll mock him a little more. The frost is back. Now we're in my domain.
Like, "It can't be true. I was the strongest."
I mean, I was trying to tell you that there are better ways and healthier ways to do things. Will you listen now?
No. And a blast radiates out from Jack, and a chill wind blows through and passes over each of the elves. And they are stunned for a second. And here, let me change the music.
The second you turned that music off, I felt my carrying capacity drop by twenty-five pounds.
Alright. Let's see. Sorry, mute. Uh, let's- there we go. The elves are stunned, and the cold light in their eyes fades, and they gradually return to their regular selves. Gaining the cherry disposition and tiny little cigarette arms that they normally have.
Do they still have the funny shirts on?
They do.
Excellent.
Uh, alright. So, running from left to right, uh, from bottom to top.
Oh, hell yeah.
Um... It says, uh... "Welcome to Flexington. Population: this guy."
Nice. Word.
Uh, "This is not sweat. My body is crying."
Okay. Little tragic, but I- I dig it.
Uh, "One with ripped-off sleeves that just says 'Write to Bear Arms.'"
Nice.
"Read the Constitution."
Nice.
And, uh, the final one says, "I lift Christmas spirits."
I like that one. It still works.
That one's pretty solid and wholesome.
Mm-hmm.
I actually had to write a lot of these, cause I ran out of, uh, funny shirts.
I think they- I- listen, the quality was maintained.
Mm-hmm.
It was.
Although I gotta say, my favorite is still "If lifting was easy, it'd be called Jamar."
Oh.
That is the best one. I don't know if you wrote that one or not, but it's the best one.
Um, and if you search his pocket, you find the remote, uh, for the giant toy dragon that is in the, uh... in the Jack-in-the-box over here.
The Jack-in-the-box I'm inside of. God, that's King Gizzard.
And I never- I never got to use it, but this was the icon for the toy dragon.
Nice.
Damn.
You could- you could still get to use it. I'll turn it on.
Holy jolly!
Sweetie, you're muted again.
Dammit, uh, I have been talking. I said, "Did you draw that yourself, Evie, or did you find that?"
I found it on a King Gizzard and the Lizard Wizard poster.
Fuck, yes.
Oh, I love it.
That's a good band.
Also, out of all of the shirts I sent you, Evie, I'm sad that we didn't get to use my favorite, Waits Clanging Nuts Dragon.
I know, I know. Waits Clanging Nuts Hanging is on here.
Nuts Hanging.
That's it.
If it was Nuts Dragon, then you could- you could put the t-shirt on the dragon.
That's even better.
Hmm.
Uh, Mrs. Claus walks over and, like, starts hitting Jack Frost on the head with her shalali.
That's fair.
"What did you think you were doing? You dolt!"
And each, uh, word is punctuated with a bonk.
Bonk.
"What bonk do bonk you bonk think bonk you were doing? Bonk, bonk, bonk."
He's got, like, a courage to the cow- the dog bump on his head that's like fully six inches tall.
He totally does.
Dang it. That's not the only thing six inches.
Oh, penis joke. I get it.
Uh-oh.
Sorry. Anyways, let her continue.
Mm-hmm. Hi, Twitch.
Hi.
I said the word penis. Sorry, everybody. Oh, I did a leak. Sorry.
Oh.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Claus.
Well, you ought to be. You caused a whole lot of trouble. Uh, thank you all for wrangling this dolt.
You're welcome.
Maple kicks open the top of the box, and her head pops out, and she says, "You're welcome."
Get out of there. You don't know where that's been.
Uh, there's a dragon in here, I think.
I know. It's part of the North Pole's security system.
So I can't have it?
She weighs her options, uh, a bit. Considering.
Um, Maple doesn't traditionally have a face to speak of, really, cause she's made of slime. Um, but she does manifest some very large pouty eyes.
Uh, give me a persuasion check.
Persuasion check. I'm... There's- whaaat? Straight down the middle, ten.
It's probably best not to.
She kinda sees you as an irrespo- irresponsible party.
Valid.
That is, I never-
That is absolutely valid.
I simply never.
If anyone else wants to make an argument, I will let you.
No.
Maple slowly- Maple slowly melts back into the bottom of the box.
I mean, we did this without dropping any blood. But we burned the shit out of that guy.
Literally solved this with no violence.
A little bit of violence, verbal violence.
Quite astonished by this. And like, in that, you see her face is, like, slightly disappointed.
Shwore.
"To be fair, good Saint Nicholas did ask us to do this as peacefully as possible."
Actually, he said to make sure that the elves lived, but he- he didn't care what happened to Jack.
He said torture was bad.
He said that he would accept it.
Oh, we totally tortured him.
Psychologically speaking.
Yeah, he'll never be the same, at least that he was there. Yeah, he's broken.
I could strike him now if you would like, for a modest fee.
I wanted to kidnap him, but he's kinda not worth it.
Everyone give me a, uh, wisdom saving throw.
Oh, no. We have advantage because of Hero's Feast. Don't forget.
Oh, my god, you're right. I kinda still wanna fail it.
Easy twenty-four.
I'm bad at these.
Twenty-six.
Been fine to me.
Nineteen.
Plus two is not bad at these.
Wow.
Plus two is at least decent.
Okay, Bianca? Astral? Um, yeah, just Bianca. Bianca, Astral, and, uh... What? Did she get twenty-two? I'm seeing a twelve.
She rolled twice, cause she has advantage. The first one was twenty-two.
Oh, okay.
That's why I have twenty-six.
Oh, plus four also, yeah.
Yep.
Uh, Bianca did get a twelve, though.
Yeah, not so great.
He's so pathetic. You genuinely feel so bad for him, and you are, uh, charmed due to his, um, sorrowful aura.
I would like to kick him.
Okay.
That's- that's enough.
Now you can't say we solved this without any violence.
I mean, technically, we did solve it.
He's already beaten.
Technically, it's already solved.
I can tell that I had to make a save, right? Isn't that how that works?
No, that's not how that works.
Is it not, though?
No. It has to specify that the person actually knows it happened, and usually it doesn't specify unless it's a spell.
Correct.
Which I don't believe this is a spell. This is just some aura.
It's actually just an eladrin thing, isn't it?
Yep.
Yeah, it's, uh... It's not a spell, though.
Canonically, he's an archfey who, um, was turning into, like, from a, uh, spring elad- from a winter eladrin to a spring eladrin, and since, uh, his identity is so tied up with seasons, it was fucking with the environment.
That checks. I'll- I'll kinda just wave at you guys, like, "Leave him alone. He's already beaten." Not only that, I- I look at him and say, "You have a place in this world, and I understand where you're coming from. I do. But, think about it. If you don't relax and calm down every now and then, have a cool-off period, the winter season, you'll burn yourself out, and someone will come along and beat you while you're weakened." I kind of motion to Bianca. "Your place is as valuable as any, games or not."
He's, like, looking... He looks up at you and looks down, like, throughout the course of your talking, just kinda sheepishly taking it all in. And wordlessly, he just goes in for a hug. He also now has little stick arms, and his, uh, formerly tight tank top is now hanging off of him.
I'll- I'll hug him and say, "From one miserable man to another."
Kick him on the cheek like it's Metal Gear Solid 4.
No.
Okay.
He sniffles, like, "Do you wanna play Settlers of Catan sometime?"
Holy shit.
That would be lovely.
Blown away that he said this.
Why are you blown away?
I feel like Monroe would hate Settlers of Catan.
He's-
He does.
He's a gay man.
He is.
Wait, is Settlers of Catan a gay thing?
No, it's just- it's just a game that he does that they don't think that he would like. I think.
I'm surprised that Monroe agrees to play Settlers of Catan, is- is all.
Monroe feels tremendous pity and sees a little bit of himself in poor old Jack, so he's like, "I wish I had a friend." I know he wishes he had a friend. God damn it.
Uh, Monroe's got friends.
Friends!
Well, he does now, but like, don't forget, this has canonically happened over the space of, like, what, forty-eight hours? So, keep still getting used to it.
Maple is quick to befriend. It's been like odd day, I think.
It hasn't been even a day, cause we had until midnight to solve the problem.
So, he's like, "I- I may have just made friends today. This poor fucker, like, I should extend the same arm."
Fair enough. I believe that is all of the issue. Uh, should I just go ahead and notify Santa Claus?
Oh, please do.
Yeah, I'll do that. She'll cast sending. Like, it's dealt with. Uh, Jack is normal. Your wife is here also. You can come back.
I'll see him in a second. The reins, Jack.
And Jack, uh, kinda like, slowly, uh... undoes, uh, his belt, and it shifts back into, uh, like, a reindeer bridle. And, uh... Mrs. Claus grabs it and snaps it into place, and a, uh, a spectral reindeer appears, and she hops on it and moves through, uh, like, begins to ride out of the factory and moves to a portal into the, uh, prime material plane. And you can s- see through the portal, uh, Santa's cabin.
Oh, that works.
Come on. "Jack, I think you have someone to say sorry to." Hmm?
Indeed.
Continues, um, his staring contest with the cobblestones. Uh... Like, kinda rubbing his arm. Uh, no, he's not winning anything. He's not winning anything tonight.
Damn.
Um... As Mrs. Claus brings, uh, Santa back through the portal.
Oh, I thought we were going through the portal, but if he's coming here, that works even better.
I mean, he has to get back to his operations.
Yeah, that checks.
And he, like... He and Mrs. Claus hop off of the spectral reindeer, and he, like, pulls the reins away. The reindeer disappears, and he, like, ties it around his waist.
"Well, I'm impressed."
"They successfully completed your commission."
Without any bloodshed, and your elves are fine.
"Oh, come here."
And like, he runs up and just squishes you in the biggest, uh, smokiest bear hug you've ever had.
Oh, goodness.
"My queen, would you like me to end him?"
Oh, this is fine, and this is what people do. Jog back. I'm not used to this.
He smells like tobacco and firewood.
Smokey.
And- and bourbon. Lots of bourbon.
Oh. Well, fair enough.
Oh. And he, like, goes over to the elves and, like, just kinda- And he like goes over to the elves and like just kinda rubs the like tussles their hair and everything, happy to see that they're safe. And he looks at Jack and just says, "What the fuck, man?" Jack says nothing.
Jack is your life coach. You should apologize at the very least.
He looks at you, Monroe, and uh sort of uh writes himself and just says, "What I did was wrong. I'm sorry, Nick."
Yes.
That's... Oh, go ahead, Monroe.
Oh, Monroe just looks at Jack and says, "Very good. Also, Mr. Nicholas, don't be too hard on him. He was feeling underappreciated, feeling people liked the spring more and just wanted to help people in his own misguided way." "Huh." "The reason for the season is the cold does bring us together. Staying inside, taking a break, and basking in the warmth of loved ones is what makes this season matter. It shows the enduring spirit of all living things and the generosity that comes with it. This rest is necessary. The cycles and the ebb and flow of the world are what make it a lively place to live. You are a key part of that. Plus, I don't know who else is gonna help me beat Jonathan, Scolito, and Euker."
Oh, I love Euker.
And he just like holds his hand out to shake uh Jack's and he puts his much smaller, tiny little cigarette arm uh in for the handshake. And Santa like firmly shakes up and down, like pulling Jack's whole body up and down. Congratulations, y'all.
Yeah, we saved Christmas.
You fucking saved Christmas.
We did. In the most non-violent way possible.
Slithers up next to Saint Nick and uh very unsubtly has an open bag in her hand.
Jack, uh uh Santa rolls his eyes and tosses uh four more um to and from tags into your bag.
Oh? Oh, you're ever so kind, Mr. Nicholas. Thank you.
Share 'em.
Can do.
Also, I believe I got something for all of you.
All right. Now, I wonder if I, I wrote this down somewhere. It's a question of if I can pick it back up.
Fair.
Uh, Bianca, Santa walks over to you and places a pearl of power uh in your palm, uh on a ring, and uh what is your sister's name?
Aspen.
Uh engraved, it says, "For Aspen, for you may ever be protected."
Thank you.
And like that, this entire adventure became canon.
Thanks.
None of this crap is canon.
You'll see what that means later.
None of this crap is canon.
Oh, Evie.
DM can do what he wishes.
You're building upon lore that is Sam's beep-bad.
Mm-hmm.
It is now.
Uh, Astral.
Hmm?
Santa walks over to you and hands you a um, a calendar of all the boys from BTS.
Thanks.
She's, she'll accept it and she'll look through it and be like, "Oh, well, thank you." Kind of over boys, but this is still nice.
You, you look different.
Yeah, I kind of grew out of my boy crazy face. Not really.
She was in a space cocoon, Nikki.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, oh, the old space cocoon. Got it.
You prefer girl groups now and I, I pass you a Luna album?
Accepted as well. Uh, I mean, I'm, I mean, I, I suppose they're cool, too. I, I'll, I'll accept these, thank you.
Fitz, uh Santa walks down to you and kinda just like does a double take, like
Antique Klaus. What can I do for you?
Were you here before?
He was the undead you couldn't understand. He changed like
Oh, yeah.
And like, out of his bag, he pull, he pulls out a um, a steel, a steel drum smoker named Revenge.
Wow.
The hell?
Don't ask me. You asked for revenge and uh Santa took another suggestion that was just get him a smoker. I believe.
Uh, Maple um tried valiantly to uh translate your hideous hell gurgles uh and failed just as valiantly.
What the hell is this?
It's a meat smoker.
Smoke, smoke meat.
That's what you asked for, isn't it?
Uh...
I admit, I might not have gotten all the nuance, but, oh.
I'll, I'll, I'll smoke meat, I guess. I mean, I got a lot of hobbies. I make a lot of things. Do you want some candy?
You want some candy?
Yeah, do you want some candy?
It sounds like you go for some candies.
How about we eat each other's candy on three?
I want candy. What'd you say?
Oh, I, how about we eat each other's candy on the count of three?
All right.
Hand him, I hand him a piece of uh liquor.
That thing where you interlock elbows and like each eat it at the same time?
Santa hands you a bag of uh classic red hot uh spicy drops.
Ooh.
Ah, shit, I know what these do. Uh, he takes a bite of mine, I take a bite of his as he takes a bite of mine. What happens?
It's delicious.
Oh, he finds himself invigorated with the haste spell, like he's taking a little bit of cocaine.
Just a little bit.
Just a little bit.
Like a healthy amount.
Yeah, make him, make him run around for a minute.
Good old rock candy.
Good old rock, good old...
Oh, I was already saying rock candy.
I meant nose candy.
Nose candy.
Nose candy. Candy be a schnoz.
Oh, baby.
And Maple.
Hi.
You wanted to protect your tree, right?
More or less, yeah. Yes, she wouldn't say yeah.
Uh, Santa snaps his fingers and um a few elves in forest ranger gear begin marching uh through the door. Uh, ten in total. And they say, um, "Not just you can prevent forest fires, we can too."
Oh, lovely. I'm sure the druids would adore some help. Thank you ever so much, Mr. Claus.
They stare at you dead eyed, the wind whistling through their ears.
Hey. Long as they can grab a branch, you know what I'm saying?
And Monroe.
Hi.
Well, uh, took a better doing, but...
And he hands you uh the deed to the upstream knucklehead. Uh, a tavern, the deed to a tavern in uh in Ten Towns.
I look down and nod and say, "Well, it isn't a one-way ticket to Waterdeep, but it will do just as well." And I look at Jack and say, "It is closer to, figuratively, I suppose, or relatively from here. You know, Jack. Perhaps you could stop by from time to time. I am sure it has a nice loft we could play Settlers of Catan."
Always welcome in my house in Ten Towns as well.
He's genuinely touched with the kindness.
You're always free to visit the Crimson Forest so long as you keep the ice at bay.
Jack looks at the like frost, like radially creeping out from him across the cobbles and just kinda like shrugs. "I don't know about that."
Can probably visit in wintertime, honestly.
Neither way.
Red tree does bloom year round. So it probably wouldn't cause too much of an issue.
I also think I know some great frosted beverages you might enjoy. But thank you, Nicholas. This is wonderful. I can maybe start building a life for myself again.
Now, do y'all wanna start loo- like rooting through those piles of presents?
Why not?
Let's go.
I believe I have a tag for everybody.
Astral's gonna say, "Can I just trade my tag in for that dirt toy dragon?"
Can I do that?
I mean, that's up to you, though I think uh I'm more responsible than you are.
Uh, each of you give me a persuasion check.
Hittingly, I'm not very good at this.
My sheet will load eventually for me to do so.
Nine.
What was that, Rebecca?
We lost Becca halfway between my sheet will blank.
She got triple my score.
Beat Jeebus, Becca.
And that's without me needing to throw in bless, which I don't feel like I need to.
Christ on a cracker.
Listen, I'm a, I'm a barbarian. I'm good at lift and I'm good at push and I'm good at hit.
All good.
I'm not good at convince.
Santa looks at both of you and just says,
"Well, if you share and you keep an eye on that one." Yipper.
Sounds fun.
And uh Astral, he reaches into uh, he like holds his hand out to Jack and um Jack hands him the remote control for the for the toy dragon. And he tosses it to you, Astral.
She will catch it and accept it. Thank you. I will make sure to watch. You're not burning anything.
You know, I was very close to breaking the antenna off of it, so I'm glad that I didn't.
I mean, it probably could be fixed, but either case, gonna be extra careful with this.
I take my tag and I sort of look at the present pile. I look at all of my new friends and I sigh and I turn to Maple and say, "I have all that I need, but your tree can use all the help you can get, or it can get. Here." And I hand you my tag. Find something nice and valuable and I'll help you hawk it.
Mr. Monroe, I'm so touched.
Please.
I'll be sure to tell the rest of the cult of your generous donation.
It is uh, no, please, it is perfectly fine. Uh, the, the most sincere gifts are given anonymously after all.
Oh, everyone always gets so scared by the word cult. I'm proud that it's not as scary as it sounds.
Uh, the politically correct term is alternate faith, dear. Alternate faith. It helps with the optics.
It's short for the word cultivation, you see.
That is very unfortunate for you.
Uh, and I guess Maple goes, let's see, is there, is, is there like a particularly, is there any difference to the presents or am I just, am I just rolling out a table here?
Um, let's see. There's a really long one, like extremely long box. Uh, there's a pet cage, weird, like a pet carrier.
Okay.
Um, a whole box that looks to be roughly the size of a ping pong table.
Okay.
Uh, a jewelry box with a ribbon on it.
Ooh.
A gift box with some strings hanging out. Um, an entirely flat uh but fairly large envelope.
Hmm, tempting.
Cash money, cash money, cash m-
That was, that's where, that's where I'm going. Although paper money is not really a thing in D and D, is it?
Uh, what looks like a dress box.
Dress box.
Yeah, some of these might be repeats, but
That's fine. But um, Maple has two tags, so she'll go for the ping pong sized one and the jewelry box.
Okay.
I think those are what she would do.
You look at the tag and you're kinda shocked. It says, "For Fitz Hawkwood."
Oh, oh Fitz, I'm so sorry. It seems I have yours.
I feel like your name has popped up quite a bit.
I just work here. For you specifically.
I also work here.
Oh, look at that.
I wrote this, I wrote this table like weeks ago.
Uh-huh.
Well, if you wish to look, look.
All right. Uh, open up the package that says Fitz.
It is a really nicely crafted, water-cooled candy-making table.
Whoa.
Holy crap, holy crap, holy crap! Ugh, alright, has a heart attack and dies.
Whoa, well, that's probably happened before.
I feel like death isn't exactly stable with his family. She says that she idly like-
I'm so sorry. I've been rather secluded.
He gets up and he starts looking at the specs of the table, starts admiring it. Thinks about how to roll out candy on it. Gonna need a few uh new tools, utensils, gonna need uh a copper spinner to actually like make the rolled out candy like come out all the different facets that come with that and all the little pieces he needs to manufacture now. And see it, his face light up. New purpose.
You know, Mr. Mon- or Mr. Fitz, I think that this is the first time I've seen you smile.
Really? I'm not that old.
Friends have only known you for about an hour and a half, but still.
Yeah, well, I smile fairly often, thank you. It's just, I don't know. Holidays. Holidays.
I think that a smile always better suits a hero, don't you?
I think it depends on the hero, though I'm more preferable to anti-heroes.
All right, and um you were going for the uh, was it the jewelry box?
Yes, did that, um, did his candy ta- table take up my tag or was that already on there?
It already had a tag for Fitz, so this costs no tag.
Got it. In that case, I'll, instead of that one, I'll go for the long one in the jewelry box.
All right. Uh, the long one uh says, "For Yipper." "Of Hawkwood?" with a question mark next to it.
Well, I have no idea who that is, so I'm sure they won't mind.
Evie, I give you a point of inspiration for that deep fucking cut.
Nice. Of Hawkwood, question mark?
Can DMs have inspiration?
Yeah.
No, no, you see, this is for when Evie's playing in my campaign. She has inspiration there.
I see.
All right.
Cross campaign inspiration.
And it's a long metal pole with two buttons on one end.
I press one of them.
It locks into place and cannot be moved at all. You have discovered an immovable stripper pole.
Whoa.
To the ten wood we would get.
I have, I have gotten it. Uh, oh, oh gosh, um, and she pushes the button the second time.
It falls back into place and starts acting like a regular piece of matter.
Uh, she falls over.
All right, and, uh, the jewelry box, you said?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, this one is for Percival Hawkewood.
Uh.
What a nerd.
Fitz, do you know this person?
Percy?
Pers- Percival.
Percy Vowell. Uh, I mean, in the past, we stopped, uh, I better not say.
Would you prefer I save this for him?
Yeah, you should definitely probably save that for him.
Very well. Uh, and she leaves that one and she goes over to the envelope.
All right. This is for our favorite adorable mech, uh, Tara.
Tara.
Nobody knows a Tara, right?
Not personally, no.
Bianca would, no.
Excellent.
You read the tag and it says T3.
I'm one's future.
Right.
T, is it T3RA or is it, I thought it was for Tara.
Or it's, uh, T3R4. Well, actually, I can't say that about Tara. That's just.
I thought it was Tara, like Tara, like Tara by. I thought that's what it was.
Yeah, it was.
So is it just English lettering then, I assume?
I mean, originally, I don't know how Santa writes things.
I, uh, no, 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 I, I thought about how I would draw, um, Tara once and I wanted to imagine her as, um, sort of a like teapot robot that kept being built on.
Love that.
So.
Two.
Um.
T E A and then the R was squeezed in there?
Like, it would be T E A, uh, four, but the R gets re- but the A gets restyled into an R and the four gets restyled into an A. So it's T E R A. But you open it up and it's a portable hole.
Those are always very useful.
Uh, I put my head inside. I peeked my head in.
It is the coziest looking breast breakfast nook you have ever seen. It's always, it's always a sunny morning with a clear sky and birds chirping outside. Smell of coffee and tea and toast is really strong.
For an inexplicable reason, Maple is overcome with the feeling that she is being watched.
All right. Uh, anyone else want to take a crack at looking around, looking around at presents?
I'll take a look.
Portable hole and movable pole. Some, there's a joke in here somewhere. There's a joke in here somewhere.
I, I wasn't gonna make that joke. I didn't even think about that joke. I would appreciate it if that joke weren't made.
That's why I didn't make it. I just mentioned that there was a joke. And audience at home, here's a, here's a fun audience interactivity. Uh, they can try to figure out what the joke is. Be sure to send in your answers to five, 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 one, two, nine, eight.
All right, so.
Leave a note in the comments if you think you know what the joke is.
We've, we've got a stocking with Killa's name on it.
Oh, no.
That's gonna be terrifying.
Nobody touch that. Nobody touch that. No one.
There is a pet carrier.
Leave that. You leave it. You just leave it.
Don't, don't, don't.
You just walk away.
Yeah, Bianca knows Killa. We're, we're leaving that alone.
There's a pet carrier with a, uh, cloth white ribbon on it. Um, let's see, we already did the candy table. Uh, there's a gift bag with some strings hanging out. There's a dress box.
Dress box, sure.
All right. This one is for Virgo Morgan.
Oh. Uh, as, as Maple leaves the portable hole, uh, a, a, a small half elephant head pokes out of it. Oh. My mistake. I thought you were somebody else.
The green tiefling comes back, uh, like barging through the factory doors. Uh, you don't know how she's able to see things because her hair is covering her eyes and she points directly at Virgo and says, "That's a portable hole. That is not a bag of holding." Different dimensional spaces. Get out of there. It's a portable hole, not a plot hole.
It's been in portable holes too.
Walks up and grabs Virgo by, uh, the half elf ear and just like drags her out of the factory and off screen.
Hmm, interesting.
Uh, Virgo waves at you. Virgo waves at you all as she leaves.
She will wave back. They'll have no clue what's going on.
All right, Bianca. Inside is a luxurious purple coat. Uh, well, purple cloak. And if you put it on, despite there being no wind in the room, it starts waving around like Superman's cape. Uh, it is a cloak, it is a cloak of billowing.
Hell, yeah.
I, I will accept the cloak.
I hope you guys, uh, like the presents for your old characters.
I do.
It's very cute.
I do enjoy them, yeah.
I wish you had ever met Libra so I could see whatever dumb horse shit you'd give to her.
Hmm.
My character will pull a gift last.
A gift what?
I said she'll use her tag last.
All right. Uh, Monroe. Uh, oh, wait, no, you already gave your tag away. Um, Fitz Hawkewood. What does the, um, boy who, like the, what is the man who was a boy? That is kind of freaking me out. Um, despite every, every man once being a boy.
I was gonna say statistically, most men used to be boys.
Yeah, statistically, it's, it's pretty common.
Like probably ninety-five percent of them.
I know, but like, in my head, I was like very excited for like, oh, man, it would be great if Emil placed Fitz for this, because then we just get Fitz meeting Santa Claus and we have these two, like, we have this extremely cute but terrifying kid running into like the extremely cute but terrifying elves.
And now Fitz is a hundred and seventy years old.
But no, this is a grown ass man. What does the grown ass man want to do? What does the grown ass man want for Christmas?
I haven't thought of that in years. You know?
Okay.
With all the hell that breaks loose in a few years.
No talking of the future.
Right, sorry, my queen. I, uh.
Visions of hordes of undead marching on Neverwinter. Sorry, what was that?
There's, um, there's Killa's stocking still on the mantel, um, looking for voting.
I'd, uh,
Looking for voting.
I, I'd like to be able to see my sister one last time. But maybe, maybe we shouldn't call upon the dead tonight.
Ooh, 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 can I do this one?
I mean, uh, yeah, go for it.
No, 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 I, only because I have something planned for this in the future. Don't want to sit on your DM toes, but.
You know what? Uh, the green tiefling comes back once again and, um, hands you a different set of reins.
Fair. Um, I would imagine at this point, Santa Claus turned to you and says something along the lines of, "Well, we don't have to bother the dead for that." And he waves his hand. A shimmering portal opens up before you. You see, as if you're peering through a mirror, Avarice, old, maybe in her, oh, maybe in her sixties or seventies, sitting around a fire. Uh, enjoying a delicious cup of hot tea. And in front of her, you see a different motley crew of adventurers. Some faces familiar, others not, as they turn to leave. Avarice just sighs to herself and says, "Oh, I thought I left this depot business all behind." She has not noticed you, Fitz.
Did, did you survive?
She turns and looks back at you. "Fitz, though, you look older than I remember you."
You look older than I. You.
Yes, eh, well, how are you? Who is that fat red man behind you?
It's a total mind that, uh, and Fitz makes a few steps and the portal cuts.
Saint Nicholas turns to you and says, "Time and fate are fickle things. You don't want to go pressing your luck, so I can give you."
I'd love to say that Fitz walked into the portal, not thinking about it, and vanished with it.
Oh, that actually is even.
I have to go.
That's, that's even better. That's perfect. You all see Fitz disappear into a portal. Santa Claus, whoops. It will sort itself out.
Well, there he goes.
All right, handing rights back.
Ooh, choosy.
I feel as though Maple Cinnabar has another case.
I can find him later, probably. Maybe, we'll see.
Have a good one. Bye, buddy.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Bye. Was a good exit for him.
It was.
Thank you, Sam.
Anytime.
All right.
Astral will use her tag then. Be like, all right, well, let's see what's left.
Okay. You've got a heavy, uh, like, looking crate that looks about the length of your forearm. Uh, another stocking that says Cass. And, a metal case with a red ribbon on it.
Um.
And, uh, oh, sorry, I'm still going through it.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Another, uh, intricately, uh, well-carved wooden box with dovetails on it. Uh, another dress box. You've still got the pet carrier. And, uh, the gift bag with strings hanging out.
Which one is the biggest?
Let's see, the biggest? Uh, the big items have really all kind of been taken, I guess. Uh, the biggest is probably the wooden crate that's about the size of your forearm.
She will go for the crate.
Uh, this one is for Cecilia. Uh, the, um, the artificer, not the cleric.
I was about to ask, like, which Cecilia we got to?
No, but the pet carrier is for the other Cecilia.
Fair enough, fair enough. Yeah, she'll open the, uh, the, the crate.
Oh, wait, no, the pet, the pet carrier is definitely larger than the crate. I'm silly.
Oh, okay, uh, she doesn't have any pets, though, so she'll, she'll stuck with the crate, crate.
All right. The pet carrier is moving around. It has something inside it.
Oh, there is a creature in there. Okay, she'll open that then, because it's bigger.
With a little bow on his head. And a lot of sounds that almost sound like bits of bamboo clanking against each other. On a set of phalanges crawls out chicken fingers.
Yay.
Chicken fingers is confused.
I'm also confused. What's chicken fingers?
The best boy.
I see.
I didn't expect. Whatever happened to chicken fingers? Wasn't he like trapped or something?
In a domain of dread, yes.
He got out.
And now he's in a domain of ice.
It's like, oh, well, isn't this an interesting creature?
This is actually perfect. I eventually wanted to bring chicken fingers back, but I never found the opportunity. This is amazing.
She's, she's like, oh, well, I, I certainly would like to keep this thing, though.
Somehow chicken fingers returns.
That's a very interesting one. I don't know if I should take it. This is an animal, right? This isn't a dead.
At one point.
It clacks at you excitedly.
Aw, aren't you friendly?
What is chicken fingers?
So chicken fingers is literally, imagine a skull, but like with a bunch of like, like, uh, like, I think it had two pairs of hands, like where the neck should be, and it's just like an animated like sculpt.
It's, imagine a skeletal arm, hand.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
But where the shoulder would attach is a skull and it clatters around on its fingers like an upward scorpion tail.
Yeah, yeah, there you go.
I fuck with that.
Yeah, that, that's chicken fingers.
That's a boy.
Yeah, that was Cecilia's undead, because there, she was casting animate dead and there was slightly not enough body parts. So, uh, ended up being.
I think there was slightly too many body parts.
That was great.
I just want to say I hate, um, the fact that Windows is no longer just an operating system, because I wanted to search my computer for this drawing of chicken fingers I did.
Hmm. No, you just can't find it, though.
Yeah, I can't find it because I was just like, okay, I'm gonna type in here to search and it's just, "Oh, you want to search the web for chicken fingers? Do you want to find where you can like look for some tasty ass chicken fingers? There's a raisin canes two miles away."
Yeah, you have to like open a file.
Yeah, you have to go into like your, your file explorer specifically and then you can do it.
Yeah, you have to go into file explorer specifically.
Let's see.
Agreed that that's a pain in the ass, though.
I, I did want to search all drives, but.
You can do that.
Yeah, you could just like search my computer.
Yeah, if you just go to like this PC or whatever, you can just search the whole of all of it.
Yeah. But, uh,
Oh.
But Astral's kid taking chicken finger. She's like, all right, well, I will take this new pet and find Fitz afterwards.
All right, we're, we're looking for it.
I'd love him.
Love me chicken fingers.
I feel like chicken fingers and Dear Mister Man would get along swimmingly.
They probably would.
What were you saying? Uh, savvy?
I was agreeing that Dear Mister Man and Chicken Fingers would get along.
They would.
Canonically, they do. Now, you're welcome.
Excellent.
Awesome. We don't know how they'll meet, but they do.
Oh, I know how they'll meet. Don't worry.
Fair enough. The DM would know.
Ominous.
Ominous. Implies that there will be some crossovers.
Bitches, I already said this is canon.
I know, I know. I'm just saying crossover with the sigil as well.
What did you think? All of my campaigns are canon. They're all part of the same continuity.
I know. I'm just saying that they'll be physically together. Like, they'll meet.
Everyone is here. Ultimate Super Smash Brothers.
Yeah, champ select. Pick all your characters. Or one of them.
And above board, here's what all the characters got. Killa, like, since I think we're done searching through all the piles.
That's probably fair.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and, all right, Killa got coal.
Nice.
Valid.
Makes sense.
Uh, Yipper had the stripper pole, um.
The Yipper pole, please.
Yipper the stripper. Uh, let's. Uh, let's see, Grog had the tankard of sobriety. Uh, Jackie was getting a, uh, bag of tricks with little fae creatures.
Aww.
Uh, Thea had the picnic of spider flying. Neon was gonna get a, uh, bomber jacket, like a really sick ass bomber jacket.
Hell, yes.
That checks.
Dari was going to receive, uh, that was the intricately carved box, uh, with dovetails, the mask carving kit.
Nice.
Uh, Mari was going to receive a, uh, microphone and amplifier as a sentient weapon of warning.
I love that. I love that so much.
A, no, B, I love it too.
That would have been such a great weapon, you could just easily make that like a whip.
Where's that one, hold on, there's a funny, there's a funny, yes.
Uh, Cass also getting coal.
Fair.
Wait, really? Cass isn't that bad?
Uh, she's still beef.
Ah, you got me there.
Can I do this or is it only gonna post frame one?
She respects gravesites, but she doesn't respect target, uh, security.
Agreed. Down with rainbow capitalism.
Yeah, I mean.
Down with all capitalism.
I mean, it is down, valid, unfortunately.
Target already beat you to it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No longer profitable to cater to the gays.
This week has been fun.
It's been horrible.
Zar.
Is that new this week?
I don't know what we're talking about.
Target hates gay people now?
I think it's really hard to like keep track of time, frankly, so much is happening so fast.
That's true, today's February, isn't that fucked up?
Yeah, yo, today exists, ain't that a bitch?
Today's February. It should be like January eleven right now, I feel like.
I can Google the word Trump in the news column and every single.
Why would you ever do that?
Day, it's a different thing.
Why would you ever do that?
To answer your question of actuality, Rebecca, um, Target recently removed, Target recently removed all of their DIE initiatives, uh, and also, uh, is basically stopped carrying LGBTQ merchandise.
Oh. I see.
They're gonna be phasing out the black owned brands as well, which is tragic, cause.
Super cool, yeah, love that.
Yeah, and that's the reason that I shop to Target a lot and, uh, I'm not shopping at Target anymore.
Okay, fair.
They have begun their racist arc, essentially.
They have resumed their racist arc.
Correct.
I mean, I worked there and it was very much just like, all for, like, they had no conviction from the beginning.
Of course not.
Well, yeah, I mean, like, it was all rainbow capitalism and you know what, like, it, it, uh, it's, it's, it's disgusting.
There was a reason I was the only trans girl who worked there for more than like a few months.
Valid. Also, hi Twitch, fuck off Target.
Hi Twitch.
Uh, and, um, lastly, Cecilia, the artificer, was getting an arcane propulsion arm.
Oh, that's cool. An arcane propulsion arm. That sounds kind of cool.
So you could Superman fly?
I have never heard of that.
Iron Man arm. I, I wrote this list like, at least a week ago. I think it was two weeks ago. But, y'all saved Christmas.
We saved Christmas.
Everyone a hot.
Which isn't the holiday that exists in D and D, but we saved it anyway.
Fresh, uh, creatine free hot cocoa and you clink your mugs in the air and the frame freezes and it just says Merry Christmas to February.
True.
Woo-hoo.
True and real.
Sam also approves. Is it a dancing thing? Yay, we saved Christmas.
Yay.
There's thunder in your heart. Every move is like lightning.
Yay.
And you can say, yeah, bro, we do gift.
We do gift.
We do gift.
We finally answered the age old question. In my age, I mean.
Also, that was good. I enjoyed that a lot.
I also enjoyed it.
That was excellent, well done.
I'm excited for the full length Evie campaign.
Oh my god, no.
Me too.
Do you think you can handle a full campaign?
I super cannot, I struggled so much, but this was fun.
That's fair.
No, look.
I had a great time.
I am so glad. I was so worried this would be, like awful and awkward.
No, I had a blast.
No, this was a fucking amazing.
I agree. Also, fun fact, not that I was ever brought up, but, uh, Astral was a, i- is also a Hawke Wood.
I, I, I hazarded a guess, but I didn't want to say.
Surprises me. Hold on, what? Lord.
Yeah, no, she was, she, she's not like blood related, but she was adopted into it.
That's what I fucking thought.
Eventually gonna have a Hawke Wood character.
I will never have a Hawke Wood character, there's plenty.
There is plenty, all played by Emile.
Alright, we're gonna end the stream.
Yeah, I'm about to end this stream. Alright, thanks guys, thanks for watching, I appreciate it, especially you Sam, you are MVP in my eyes, appreciate you. Thanks everyone for watching and that's the end of our Christmas special, so next time it'll be our regular sigil campaign. So, see you guys next week. Good night.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
See ya.